Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order at 3:05 PM. Roll call. Trustee Wigan, here. Trustor Soylou. Trustee Murphy.
Here.
Trustee Pearson.
Here.
Trustee Anderson.
Here.
Trustee McElroy.
Here.
Trustee Crane.
Here.
Dr. Smith.
Here.
Do I have an emotion to adopt the agenda?
Yes. I move to adopt the agenda, but with the change to move... Just remember the numbers. It's at... Sorry. Nineteen A. Thank you. Nineteen A.
Nineteen A.
To, um...
Nineteen A.
To write before, um, achievement seventeen.
Okay, so you want to move nineteen A to be discussed before item seventeen.
Can I ask, here, I have a question. Point of order.
Why don't we do a motion, and then a second, and then discussion?
Point of order usually is a question before a motion.
Okay, fine. Fine, fine. You're good.
Oh, I just want to understand why.
Well, it'll give us an opportunity to speak to and ask as many questions as possible to the DA and the staff who will be here early in the meeting.
Well, community members are coming to speak to it, and they are not aware of that. So, we've never moved discussion, action, and just one item to a different time.
So, keep them from speaking here?
Well, people are coming at, like, a specific time.
Are they making public comment? Because public comment is still before that.
Yeah. I just, I'm really hesitant to set a precedent for doing that.
I agree with Trustee Anderson in the sense that people, the agenda is put out there ahead of time so people can plan, and if we want to maximize our transparency and discourse and engagement, because public comments can also be made before the item is discussed, right?
Yes, but they would have to get their card in before, during that time, though.
Right, so I would encourage that we don't move this to consider it.
Okay. We, I... Do you have any other comments on why you want to move?
Well, there's, um, no, other than to just sort of, um, let the staff who wanted to spend their, well, I mean, as long, it's the same with the community members, certainly, who wanted to speak on this and be able to answer, to be available to answer questions. So, if we need to keep everyone here to answer questions, then that's the way it's gonna be.
So, there's a motion on the floor. I will have us, if I get a second, then we'll vote. If no second, then it'll be dropped. So, you made a motion. Do I have a second? Okay, seeing none, we will, I need a new motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved?
Second.
Okay, so this motion is to adopt the agenda as is. Roll call, vote. Trustee Wigan. Yes. Trustor Soylou. Trustee Murphy.
Yes.
Trustee Pearson.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee McElroy.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
All right, motion passed, six zero. Community input on closed session items only. Seeing none, we will now move into closed session. The items are A, conference with legal counsel, workers' compensation; B, conference with legal counsel, worker's compensation; C, conference with real property negotiator; D, conference with labor negotiator; E, public employee discipline dismissal release. And we will return to open session at six PM. All right, just a couple housekeeping items, just for the folks standing in the back. We actually have a fire code issue where no one can stand. So, there is the overflow viewing room, I think, in the lobby, if you guys want to walk that way. We just can't have you stand, so I'm sorry. But I think you can still hear us in there, which would be great, and then I know that there are some items that people will filter in and out of. Thank you so much. So, I'm gonna call the meeting to order at six oh one. Opening ceremonies and moment of reflection and pledge of allegiance led by our student board member Jeremy Lor.
Please stand. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay. All right. Thank you so much. Adoption of the minutes from eight nineteen twenty-five and eight twenty-two twenty-five. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Crane, seconded by Trustee Pearson. Roll call, vote. Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
Trustor Soylou.
Yes.
Trustee Murphy.
Yes.
Trustee Pearson.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee McElroy.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Right, motion carries, seven oh. Now, we get to do a really fun thing, is introduce our new staff. So, we've got four new principals to introduce tonight. Deputy Superintendent Torres.
Yes, good evening. It is my proud pleasure to welcome up Mr. Jeff Giles. I know he's in the building. There he is. Why don't you come on up? We searched high and low for a principal to represent the values and the mission of Costa Mesa Middle and High School, and we found that in Mr. Jeff Giles. We stole him from, most recently, Pasancha Yorbalinda Unified School District, but he has been in education for over twenty-one years, and in that twenty-one years, he has served sixteen of those as a site administrator, rounding out his experience as both an assistant principal at the high school level and high school principal, most recently, at Esperanza High School, which is a very diverse campus and represents much of what we have at Costa Mesa Middle and High. He started his career in Downey Unified School District as a science teacher, and so we always want to ensure that we celebrate the success of our principals who've been able to successfully teach at the high school level, and I know your staff definitely appreciates that. As a principal, he was successful at Esperanza High School, moving the needle on academic achievement, ensuring that the ELA and MATH scores of that school move forward over his three-year tenure. His former supervisors, as Dr. Smith called around and asked those critical questions, said wonderful things about him and referred to him as one of the strongest instructional leaders, and they said, "We'd take him anywhere we go." He's been focused on high-quality instruction, he's been a cultivator of CTE programs, and an exceptional supporter of VAPA and the arts, receiving the OCDE, OC Music and Arts Administrator of the Year. I think he's finishing his first month, maybe month and a half with us, and you wouldn't even know that he's new anymore. He's been all over the campus, burning holes in his shoes, meeting people, shaking hands, learning community, and we welcome you to our team.
I just want to say thank you to all of you for the trust that you put in me to lead Costa Mesa High School. I can be honest, when I saw the job posting, I literally fell in love with the school based on what I read on paper, and then after being here, I can tell you, meeting community members, the staff at Costa Mesa Middle and High School, the students, the parents, it paled in comparison to the reality, and so I just feel honored to continue the legacy of such a wonderful school. So, I just want to say thank you so much, and I look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you. We're lucky to have you. All right, taken away. I think Assistant Sup Sakkora Shields.
Yes, I will present on behalf of my colleague, Dr. Kurtser, who's out, sick tonight. And so, we'd like to welcome Dr. Krista Glombaki. She joins us with a wealth of experience. She, most recently, was a middle school principal, so she deeply understands where students are going and how to get them prepared. She also blends that with her elementary teaching experience, and she comes so aligned with our most critical mission. She has a depth in GATE, in DIBELS, in thinking maps, in all of the current issues that we are addressing and working on, so we're very excited to welcome Dr. Glombaki to the team.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Good evening, President Wigan, members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Smith, and everyone here tonight. I am truly honored and grateful to be part of this amazing district. For years, I've driven by the street, taking my kids to different places, and always thought I would love to work there, and so I feel truly grateful, and standing here today is truly great, to be a principal in this amazing district. My first month at Newport L has gone extremely well and been extremely fun, just like Mr. Giles said. I just am feeling at home already, the community, the students, the teachers, everyone around me has really welcomed me in, and I feel so comfortable there already. I've also experienced a tremendous amount of support from all of the district leaders, so that has really helped me and made such a positive difference on this new journey for me. On a personal note, I would like to introduce and thank my husband, who's here tonight, Joe. He's right back here. Without his constant support and helping me with the girls, who I'll introduce in a second, I couldn't do this role like I do, so I'm really grateful for him. I'd also like to introduce my two daughters, Paige and Emily. As you can see, possibly, they came from practice today, one soccer and one diving, so they came a little early because they wanted to be here with mom. So, they're my biggest cheerleaders, and I'm so proud to have them here with me tonight. So, thank you again for this incredible opportunity. I'm truly excited and humbled and honored to work in this great community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'd like to recognize Bonnie Hinton. Now, Bonnie isn't new to the district. She's been in our district for over a decade, and she started in special education, and she was there as a coordinator, and then she joined Enson. So, as she enters Pollerino, she brings not only her leadership, but also a deep understanding of a lot of the special programs of Pollerino, the needs of Pollerino, Pollerino teachers, staff, parents, the entire community. We're very excited to welcome Bonnie to Pollerino Elementary School.
Thank you. Good evening, President Wigan, members of the board, Superintendent Smith, executive cabinet, and the rest of our school community. I am joined this evening, and I would like to introduce my husband Chad. And our son David. He was very excited about tonight. I'm honored to serve as the principal of Pollerino Elementary. The past few weeks have been spent connecting with our incredible school community, including some talented and dedicated educators, and just some really fun kids, really enjoying the students. I'm inspired and impressed daily by the work that's happening at Pollerino and just the joy that I'm seeing on campus every day. Over the course of my sixteen years with Newport Mesa, I've had the opportunity to work at every school site in the district, pre-K through adult transition, and Pollerino was one of those schools that, early on in my career and throughout, I've been able to support. So, being there now as a principal is just so exciting, because it's always been a special place for me. I look forward to building strong relationships with our staff, our PTA, our student groups, and other various parent groups on campus, as we work together to create a positive and enriching environment for our students, one that inspires connection between students, staff, and the overall community. At Pollerino, we believe in showing our Panther pride, positivity, respect, integrity, determination, and empathy, and as the leader of Pollerino, I am committed to exemplify, teach, and celebrate those traits in our students. Thank you so much for the kind welcome. I am thrilled about the opportunities ahead and the work that we will do together.
And last, but certainly not least, Ms. Brittany Figueroa. Once a proud gaucho, Brittany Figueroa is now the proud principal at Wilson Elementary. She brings administrative and classroom experience with depth and experience in academic growth, strong relationships, supporting community. She is a perfect match for Wilson. She has been a great asset to us thus far, and we look forward to working with her in the future. Brittany Figueroa.
Thank you. Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Sakkora, for that warm welcome. I just wanted to extend my deepest gratitude to you all, and I have had such a wonderful month here at Newport Mesa, and I just wanted to say, from the get-go, that it's been very, very welcoming. So, that just goes to show our leadership, and I know that that's something that we strive to give to our students every single day, to make them feel welcome, to make them feel part of a wonderful team, and I have definitely experienced that here. So, so much support from all of the directors, and especially my wonderful staff and teachers, and I've already fallen in love with the students. They're wonderful. Got to play a little bit of soccer with them yesterday, so that was very fun, but I am just overjoyed, this opportunity. It's not lost on me what an amazing opportunity this is, and I do just want to thank you so much, and I am, I'm ready, I'm ready to be here and give the best that I can. Our students deserve the best, and that is my goal, to give that to them.
We're happy to have all of you as our new principals this year. We look forward to great things. All right, number eleven is student board member reports. Trustee Ursulou.
Great. Well, I'd like to welcome our new student board members for the year that were recently selected. So, first, I'm gonna give you their names, and then I'll give you the question of the month that some of them will each come up and answer and share their thoughts from their school. So, we have Roslyn Ruiz from Estancia, we have Audrey Solomon from Newport Harbor, Kenley Lopez from Costa Mesa, Jeremy Lor from Early College, and Mackenzie Bovan from CDM, and we are still on the hunt for Montevista and Back Bay representatives. So, if anyone knows any amazing students that would want to be student board members from those two schools, please let me know. We'd love to fill those two spots. So, for tonight, we have Audrey, then Roslyn, then Jeremy are going to give their comments. Wait, where is she? On the question for the month, so every month they get a different question to answer, this month was, "What was the hardest thing about transitioning back into school mode this fall that you wish your teachers knew? Also, there are many cool clubs on your campus. Name two clubs that your school has that you think every school should have." So, let's go first. So, is Audrey here?
No.
Okay. Is Roslyn?
So, I'm trying to find the speech. Okay. First, I would like to thank the board, and president, and vice president, for electing me to be part of this important group. I'm honored to represent my school and share the voices, experiences, and highlighting from our campuses. As we return to school this fall, many students share that the transition back into structured academic routine has been challenging. Even with our eight-thirty AM start time, students have mentioned having a hard time adjusting to sleep schedules, balancing extracurriculars, and managing the early homework and quiz load. Some also expressed feelings of stress around reconnecting socially, navigating the new schedules, and jumping straight into the coursework after a long summer. At the same time, it's important to acknowledge that the first day of school at Estancia this year was unlike any other, and for many, it was exactly what they needed. We started later than usual, around nine oh five AM, which allowed students a slower and more comfortable start. From there, we transitioned into the gym for a school-wide assembly that brought a lot of laughter and joy. It was a breath of fresh air, especially for students who often feel pressure from a heavy first day of work school. The assembly included a vibrant performance from Club de Danza showcasing a traditional Mexican dance that brought culture, pride, and energy to the event. Teachers added humor with lighthearted jokes about artificial intelligence, and our vice principal even dressed up as a doll Annabelle as part of a tardy sweep reminder. These moments made the day feel special and full of spirit. It created a welcoming environment, especially for freshmen who seem more involved and connected this year than any other class before them. In terms of student life, two clubs that stood out to me this year are Rise and Chamoy. Rise, founded by senior David Perez, is a mentorship program where high school students support elementary students, especially English learners, through academic help and positive encouragement. It has grown from ten to over forty members and is planning to expand to other schools like Pomona and Whittier to continue making a broader impact. Chamoy is a student-led club that empowers youth through leadership, community discussion, and social action. In addition to hosting local-issue forums and activities, Chamoy advocates for immigrant rights and supports low-income families through community outreach and events. The club continues to foster unity, cultural pride, and student leadership on our campus. Thank you again for the opportunity to share, on behalf of Estancia, I'm proud that we have started, and I'm excited for this year.
Great. Thank you so much, Roslyn, and now we have Jeremy from Early College.
Thank you. Good evening, Superintendent Smith, esteemed board members, and members of the community. My name is Jeremy Lor, and I am thankful to be representing the students at Early College High School. I would like to start by saying that I look forward to being able to provide my peers with a strong voice this school year. When looking at our topics, I was incredibly excited to be able to highlight two of our many amazing clubs. While on campus, we only have eleven of them, it wasn't easy to narrow it down to two. Each club is remarkably impactful and contributes to our community in a variety of ways. However, one of the most unique clubs, which is also new this year, is our Advocates for Learning Club. I can't wait to see what they are able to do, as I just attended this past Thursday, and the classroom was completely full. Their goal is to identify issues or concerns on campus and advocate for student needs to school staff and to the school board. I believe having a group like this present on our campus is instrumental to facilitating student voice, and I'm happy to be a part of it. Another club that has been incredibly influential on our campus, and has been for many years, is Community Service Club. They work with numerous organizations such as Key Club, Surf Rider, and Rotary International to bring community service opportunities directly to our students. Having a club like this on any campus is fundamental to students being able to be informed about and participate in a wide range of projects and services that benefit our community. Just a month ago, they collaborated with Kelly's Closet to go back-to-school shopping with children in need. It's events like these that truly strengthen our community and the character of our students, and I love the work that Community Service Club is doing. Now, I was also asked to brainstorm with my peers the hardest part about returning back to school. Everyone has different challenges when returning, and I would like to highlight some of my peers' experiences. Some students shared the difficulty of coursework piling up early, others the challenge of adjusting to school after a summer filled with afternoons at the beach and South Coast Plaza, and one student shared with me a positive experience, the impact of having teachers that see you and care for you. But, there's one student story I would really like to highlight. I won't be naming her directly, but I will be reading part of her powerful response. Okay. "The biggest struggle I have faced is having to live on my own. Being on a bus for two hours on the way to school can be extremely stressful, as it takes time away from my sleep and how much attention I can put into my studies. On the bus, it's difficult to work, as it might be loud or packed, and while being a child living on my own may seem like a major achievement, it's important to note that I also have to work in order to pay the bills. It takes determination and hard labor. While although I am excelling in the classes I am a part of, my mental and emotional health are drained." This anecdote highlights just how diverse the community at ECHS and the entire district is. Furthermore, it emphasizes the importance of having a supportive community and staff on campus. We never know what the person next to us might be going through, so being kind, welcoming, and uplifting is essential. I'm glad to say that the students and staff at ECHS are incredibly kind, welcoming, and uplifting.
Wow, thank you for all those comments. That is really enlightening, and it's always one of our favorite parts of the board meeting, so I appreciate it. Thank you. Next up, we have Harbor Council PTA President Martha Flore.
Good evening, President Wigan, Vice President Ursulou, Clerk Murphy, members of the board, and Dr. Smith, cabinet, and our community. My name is Martha Flore, and I serve as the president of the Harbor Council of PTAs. On behalf of Harbor Council, I wish to express our sincere appreciation for the ongoing support of our mission and collaborative work with our schools. Our volunteers devote significant time and effort to ensure every student's voice is acknowledged and every family's need feels welcome. We remain steadfast in advocating for programs and policies that benefit our diverse community. Recently, Harbor Council PTA convened its first meeting of the year, and Dr. Smith and Dr. Torres, congratulations, Dr. Torres, introduced Heather Cash, Special Education Director of Elementary, and Rob Nichols, Special Education Director of Secondary, and we anticipate getting valuable insights at a meeting regarding their cross-teaching methods and strategies to foster a sense of welcoming and belonging and inclusiveness. Additionally, we participated in an informative session about Facilitron with Lance Bidnick, Amber Schumacher, and Roman Torres. This session prompted considerable dialogue, and we are grateful for their openness and willingness to engage with arts units. We plan to host a future Zoom meeting to further discuss Facilitron's scheduling and reservation processes. Harbor Council and its twenty-five units remain dedicated to strengthening connections among teachers, parents, and administrators. Our focus continues to be building upon the robust partnerships that foster student achievement and well-being and ensure that every child has access to the necessary resources and opportunities. Through ongoing collaboration and open communication, we seek to promote supportive environments. Our district now includes over thirty-eight hundred PTA members, with Corona Del Mar leading the way at four hundred and twenty-one. Three of our PTAs, Davis, Newport Harbor, and Mariners, each have more than three hundred members, and eleven schools have between one hundred and two hundred and fifty. Schools currently seeking additional support include Whittier, Pomona, Sonora, Wilson, Newport Heights, Adams, Back Bay, Ray, and Early College. We encourage everyone to consider joining at least one or more of our NMUSD PTAs. The California PTA supports AB forty-nine, the California State Safe Haven Schools and Child Care Act authored by Assemblyman Meritucci. As an emergency measure, AB forty-nine aims to protect undocumented students and their families by requiring ICE officers to present valid identification, a written statement of purpose, a judicial warrant, and obtain approval from the superintendent or childcare center director before entering a school or a childcare facility. California State PTA affirms that all children are entitled to a quality public education. Presently, many students experience apprehension due to federal immigration activities, which can disrupt educational access and compromise school environments, also causing financial challenges to districts due to decreased enrollment. It is important to stay informed about steps taken by our state, district, and individual schools in response to this issue. Both the United States Supreme Court and the California State Supreme Court have confirmed this right. The PTA maintains that schools must be safe places where students can learn and grow without fear and families can actively participate in their education. At the national level, the PTA supports Protecting Sensitive Location Act, S, which is Senate Bill four fifty-five, and House of Representatives Bill ten sixty-one, which prohibits federal immigration enforcement within one thousand feet of sensitive locations. That includes types of schools, early childhood programs, bus stops, and field trips. The Fourth District PTA will hold its first advocacy forum of the year on September twenty-sixth at nine thirty at the Orange County Department of Ed at two hundred Calmas Drive, Costa Mesa, Building D. The forum will be titled, is titled, "Stronger Together: Schools That Welcome and Protect All Students," and is open to all PTA members. Finally, I would like to highlight the recent ribbon-cutting ceremony for Estancia's Performing Arts in the Barbara Van Holt Theater for its exceptional design, and just was unbelievable. My gratitude extends to Pfeiffer and Perkins Eastman for the architectural design and Swinerton for the construction. Thank you to this board for completing the vision and promise of previous boards. I look forward to the theater's inaugural production, Frozen, in November. We appreciate your continued commitment to providing our students with safe, modern, and clean facilities, and to the dedication of our outstanding educators and administrators. I close with this quote by Benjamin Franklin, "Tell me and I forget. Teach me and I may remember." Involve. Involve me and I learn." Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have NMFT President's Comment, Rhonda Reed.
President Wigan, trustees, Superintendent Smith, Cabinet, guests here tonight, including NMFT in blue. I wasn't here for the first school board meeting of the year, so want to welcome Andrea Maka Elroy. I don't know if I'm saying your last name right. And I also want to just give a quick update since we met in the summer. NMFT participated in the New Employee Orientation hosted by the district. Well organized, it was a lovely event. 64 of the participants, the attendees, 63 joined our union. Last year, we ended the school year with the highest union membership ever, and we're starting this year with the highest of a starting membership ever. We're on track for every school site to have at least one site representative. The number of new members engaging with our union is inspiring. Our, in general, membership is at an all-time high, and it's such an honor and privilege to work on their behalf. So on Saturday, I was in Burbank for an eight-hour meeting with CFT. Just want a little sympathy here. So there's Legislative Director gave us an update on the status of some bills working their way through the system. So the number of bills that were poured over by the legislators was Friday till 3:00 in the morning. They reconvened at 10:00 in the morning, and four of our CFT-sponsored bills are on the way for the governor's signature. So one of them, AB 560, is, would, and I hope it's signed, would require districts to provide equitable caseload for initial assessment for all the special education professionals. It would also require a maximum of adult-to-student racial in the special education classroom. So I think it's wonderful to be in a district where you get ahead of these issues. You don't wait for mandates to tell you how to relieve the cumbersome workload of our special education professionals. I want to tell a story that Dr. Smith told me. It's a true story because he told me it was. I wasn't there for it. I might get some of the details wrong, but he said at the New Employee Orientation, he asked the new educators, "Did you come to Newport Mesa because you heard they have the best superintendent?" And he told me, one person raised their hands. This is what he told me. And then he said, "Well, did you come because you heard we pay really well?" And then all the hands went up. So I want to thank the school board for the raise last year and for your continued commitment to showing our educators their value and worth. And I know you hear me say all the time that we should be number one in all areas, including salaries, but now that we have Laguna CBO, maybe we can knock him off the number one spot. Maybe he knows the pathway forward. I know it's a lot of pressure, but I have faith in you, Jeff. So, thank you.
Thank you. Now, we're moving on to 14, Community Input on Non-Agendized Items. Clerk Murphy.
Yes, this is an opportunity for the public to address the board regarding items not on the regular meeting agenda. Comments on non-agenda topics are limited to three minutes per comment, up to 20 minutes per topic. A speaker may not relinquish his or her time to another person. By Order of the Brown Act, Section 54954-2, the board will take no action nor have any discussion on non-agendized items. The superintendent may provide clarification during superintendent's comments.
All right, first up, we have Charlene Matoye.
Good evening, President Wigan, Board, Dr. Smith, Cabinet, and honored guests. Today, I'm here with my Newport Mesa Schools Foundation hat on. I am, as Secretary of the Foundation, I am pleased to share that we are having our State of the Schools event again this year. It's an annual event. This year, Estancia High School is hosting us. They have the best gym, but you didn't hear me say that. And I want to thank all of you who have already RSVP'd. We need the count. So, I mean, even if you go, "Well, we know, you know the board's coming," please just punch it in and do the RSVP. And honored guests and anyone in the audience that's community members that wants to hear with accompanied video how fabulous Newport Mesa is, just in case you don't already know, feel free to sign up and come to our event. It is October 28th. It's o dark 30 in the morning, it's 7:00, but that's good for everybody who can get theirselves to school. We don't want to cheat the kids just so we can have a great video. So, thank you for your time. You know, I can be up here and be controversial, but I'm not. And you also know that when I come up here, I don't talk too much. So, thank you very much, and I look forward to seeing you at the event. I'll probably be back next month.
Thank you. Next, we have Ashley Villagran and Kristy Baluski.
Hello. I'm Ashley Villagran.
Kristy Baluski, special education teachers.
First of all, we want to say thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to speak with you tonight. We want to begin by saying how much we love the work we do. We are both special education teachers. I am in a self-contained classroom.
I'm in a mild-mad program.
Supporting students with diverse needs is deeply rewarding, and we are proud to be part of a district that supports inclusion and equity for all learners. With that said, we wanted to bring to your attention a significant concern that impacts both teachers and students in special education. While our general education colleagues receive 75 minutes of preparation time weekly, SEC teachers are not afforded the same opportunity. We do not currently receive any weekly preparation time. Yet, we are held to the same professional responsibilities and, in many ways, additional ones. In addition to a general education teacher's responsibilities, SEC teachers are also responsible for IEP development and implementation of the IEP, which often requires modification to the curriculum, behavioral supports, and visual supports. We are also responsible for conducting special education assessments, IEP goal progress monitoring, report writing, collaboration with families, colleagues, and outside service providers, and we're also responsible for attending additional meetings outside of our PLTs and regular-site meetings. Each of these tasks are essential, but they are time-consuming. So without dedicated prep time, much of this critical work happens outside of contractual hours, particularly during lunches, weekends, holidays, and we even rely on sick time. This is not sustainable, and it ultimately affects the quality of support we can provide for our students. We respectfully ask the board to consider making prep time equitable for special education teachers. It would give us more opportunities to provide the high-quality instruction and individualized support that our special education students deserve.
I just want to add that that's mostly for the elementary school. So just to paint a picture, we have combined classes. So when you have like TK and Kinder, when your TKs go to a poll-out where the janitor usually gets the prep, we still have our Kinder students. So that's kind of what's happening behind the scene. Or if you have the single-level kindergarten class and they go to their poll-out, we are being directed to go to that poll-out. So we're not receiving any prep time from the start of the day to the end of the day in the elementary self-contained classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, next, we have Shira Paxson. Sorry. Shira, okay.
Good evening, President Wigan, trustees, Superintendent Smith. My name is Shira Paxson, and I'm a SPED teacher at Pollerino. I want to first say how proud I am to be such a part of a great team at Pollerino, and I'm excited about our new leadership with Bonnie Hinton. I would like to share the thoughts of our teachers regarding the extra meetings that have been imposed in our schedules this year. The district has added almost seven hours of additional after-school time meetings to our monthly calendar. Following the last contract negotiations, teachers were under the impression that meetings would be held during early-out Wednesdays, but we now have staff meetings on the calendar twice a month on Tuesdays as well. After-school time is being reduced more and more and is desperately needed for lesson planning and class preparation. As a special education teacher, these meetings are in addition to us having IEP meetings after school on the other days of the week. Many SAI teachers carry caseloads of upwards of 28 students, each of whom have an after-school IEP once a year, in addition to students that have a reevaluation or an amendment meeting, which can add up to 10 more additional meetings for a SPED teacher annually. Self-contained classroom teachers, such as I, teach multiple grade levels in the room, which does not allow time during the workday to write IEPs. I'm not sure if you're aware, but it takes many hours to prepare one quality IEP. If a student is in a reevaluation year, the assessment report can also add an additional several hours to prepare for each of these students. All of this is mostly done outside of contract hours, early mornings, nights, weekends, and holidays, because there is simply not enough time to prepare. I implore you to consider reducing the amount of meetings required for all teachers and allow us time on some of these early-out Wednesdays to do the necessary preparations and paperwork to do our job. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Alex Gladstone-Lamas.
Hello, board members, and Dr. Smith, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm basically going to second the eloquent words of my fellow educator. I've been in elementary education in Newport Mesa for almost three decades, proud to be a teacher at Anderson Elementary School. I also represent the NMFT as the elementary school's VP, and I have been on the negotiations team in the previous year. I believe there's an issue for the meeting times after school where there's perhaps a misconstruing of the spirit of the law and the letter of the law, whereas there were some negotiated opportunities provided in the contract for teachers to have meetings after school and professional development. But it was stated earlier last year that we would only be having meetings if they were absolutely necessary and couldn't be handled in an email, which I'm sure many of you have been in meetings that you felt could have been handled in an email. And what's most precious to teachers is time, and my colleagues feel very much that there isn't enough preparation time or even time to collaborate. So I thank you for hearing the concern about the excessive meeting minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Superintendent Comments.
Yeah, Shara's going to be giving my presentation at the State of the School, so for all of you that are worried about the time, the early start, that's your advantage. Thanks for bringing that up. We're excited to share all the great success. Stay tuned. Really, really good things to brag about in the district. Grateful for our employees and very, very proud of our students. Also, Rhonda, I didn't know that you had membership up. That hi, it's amazing. Clearly speaks to your leadership. It was interesting, too, that, welcome back, we had Jeff Freitas, right? The Executive Director of all of CFT there, like welcoming folks. It's no wonder everyone signed up. President, that's right, that's right, president. Same thing, he's the big cheese. He is way up there and a great communicator. Not at all surprised people were signing up, but kudos to you and your leadership. And I can't comment on the negotiations this year, so any of the items that were alluded to tonight, I can't speak to. I could really speak to, you know, last year and how proud we were to establish the PLT time, and the effect size is inarguable. The research is clear that one of the best ways to improve student outcomes is to give teachers time to look at student data and because they're the experts, to figure out the best way to improve those outcomes. A lot of districts do this, a lot of high-performing, and we're convinced that this will be one of those strategies that's going to make us the highest-performing district in the state of California, because we trust our teachers are those experts, and we can't wait to see those exciting outcome increases. As it relates to last year's conversation around meeting time, again, contractually, they went from four, potential four hours of meeting time to potential of three. But I think the advice is well-heard, that we have to be smart about the time we use, of course, and certainly I'd be all for putting things in an email that can be in an email, and let's take that time that we have together to really maximize it. I struggle with the characterization of more time was added, but we can have coffee or something and talk about that. I think the overall message is that for last year, you know, we were excited about what we did and the joint communications that we put together to try to make sure that people weren't confused about the rollout and what we were doing. And if we need to better communicate as we continue this year, then we have allies that can help us articulate those messages. And then as it relates to this year, again, I can't comment, but I do know that our teams are meeting, and I know the meetings are positive, and I know on both sides, folks want to resolve this in a mutually beneficial way. I'm absolutely confident that that's going to happen. So as far as this year goes, that's all I could really say about that. Thank you.
All right, great. Thank you. 16, Community Input on Agendized Items. Clerk Murphy.
This is the opportunity for the public to address the board regarding items on the regular meeting agenda. Comments on agenda items are limited to three minutes per comment, up to 20 minutes per topic. A speaker may not relinquish his or her time to another person. Speaker cards for items on the discussion action calendar may be held until that item is considered by the board, if the speaker prefers.
Okay, first up, we have Andy Godinez. Sorry if I butchered your name, but you can, you're going to speak on 19A, and you can wait, you can speak now or wait till that, till we get to that item?
Wait, I'll wait.
Wait, okay. And then the other person is Eric Jimenez, and it's also, he's going to speak on 19A. Do you want to wait or go now?
I'll wait.
Oh, wait? Okay, great. Now, moving on to Achievement, 17A, Report on Summer School Program. Assistant Superintendent Shields and Deputy Superintendent Torres.
We'd like to welcome up a team. As you know, we have a very robust summer school, and we want to represent all angles of what students experienced, and I'm sure the team will do this, but want to also commend the rest of the district that helps us lift two months of more school within every speaking of the word. So from transportation to food to office to health, all of that is still going strong in the summer, and it requires a lot of coordinated efforts, and we appreciate everything that the district does to allow these programs to continue so strongly. Ms. Kristy Flores.
And team.
Good evening, Dr. Smith, President Wigan, trustees, executive cabinet, esteemed colleagues and guests. We are so excited to be here tonight to shine a spotlight on our summer programs that were offered to over 4,000 students here in Newport Mesa. I am honored to share the podium this evening with my esteemed colleagues as we will share about the diverse offerings provided to our preschool through 12th-grade students. Before we begin our musical chairs of directors here at the podium, I'd like to paint a picture of our summer landscape here in Newport Mesa. Take a look at, over the past, or during 43 days, Newport Mesa provided support to over 4,100 students. We are so grateful for our fellow departments and colleagues, such as our Transportation Department, who led 40 different bus routes, our Nutritional Services Department, who provided over 40 provided over 46,000 meals to our students. We had over 200 classrooms utilized across our elementary and secondary campuses. In order for those campuses to be prepared, we relied on our IT department, our custodial crews, facilities, M&amp;O, to ensure that our students had a safe, engaging, clean learning environment. And of course, we needed high-quality individuals, and thanks to our Human Resources Department, who hired 600 people to support these students, we were able to provide a successful summer program for our preschool through 12th grade students. So this evening, I'm going to start off by turning it over to Kathleen Leary, who's going to talk about our preschool summer program.
This summer, our four full-day, full-year preschool programs were held at Whittier. Normally, we have both at Pomona and Whittier, but due to the construction, we had all of them at Whittier this year, and we had 48 students attend our full-day, full-year. Just a little reminder about our full-day, full-year program. It operates year-round, and the only day that we have off in the summer is 4th of July. They go all throughout the summer. We go 246 days. It is funded through the California State Preschool Program, which supports high-quality early learning experience for all eligible families, and the eligibility for full-day, full-year includes families, not only are they income-eligible, but they might be employed, looking for a job, in training, or children that might be in the foster care, as a foster care student. We also, this year, had two preschools that were tuition-based, and we had them at Harborview and College Park, and they were open to families seeking enrichment opportunities, and we had 33 children attend those programs. Our preschool programs, not only during the summer but throughout the year, are playful and theme-based. We like to be active, hands-on, joyful, and developmentally appropriate. These activities support a wide range of early learning goals. We do do early literacy and math skills, but really focus on those executive functioning, friendship and social skills, fine and gross motor development. In addition, we really provide engaging and imaginative themes such as robotics, outer space, rainforest, dinosaurs. Here you see these children that they're exploring as they were on a safari. These themes are selective because they hold high interest for children, spark their curiosity, as well as help build content areas like language, science, art, and music, and movement. And children build their skills through songs and storytelling, creative arts, dramatic and constructive play, as well as pure interaction and collaborative problem-solving. Now, I will be turning it over to Christy.
The Elementary Summer Scholars Academy was a 19-day program thoughtfully planned with the intent to provide learning opportunities for both our students and our teachers. The goal was to implement strategies, tools, and curriculum familiar to the students as well as to the teachers. This summer provided us a great opportunity to sharpen our educational practices while providing an extra summer scoop of learning for our students. We were excited to welcome over 2,200 elementary students to our five campuses. As you can see, all 22 elementary schools had participants attend the Summer Scholars Academy. A special thanks to our school community facilitators, who spent additional time on the phone, reaching out to our families, making those connections to ensure that they felt welcomed and supported on the summer campuses away from their home schools. Every morning, students participated in an academic block led by Newport Mesa Elementary School teachers. The instructional focus was on reading, writing, and math. Additionally, small group reading support was provided to over 200 students in grades rising first, rising second, and rising third. Even with a short period of time, we wanted to collect data points, and what we found was positive. The Summer Academy is a screen-free program, so we relied on two assessments, a short pre- and post-reading assessment, where we found 95% of our students who participated in those small group reading instruction demonstrated growth. Then, we also compared last year's end-of-the-year star assessment to this year's beginning-of-the-year star assessment, to really compare and see what occurred over the summer. We were excited about the results. While 15% of our students increased a whole benchmark level, which is a big deal over a short period of time, 65% of our students remained at the same benchmark level, which again is a big deal, as I know there's often conversations about the summer slide, and then 46% of our students increased or remained at their scale score, which demonstrates growth over time as students are approaching the next proficiency level. We are so proud of our students, and we are really grateful for everybody who contributed to make our Summer Scholars Academy such a success. And now, it's my pleasure to invite Keith Carmona to talk about our secondary program.
Good evening. The secondary summer school program had a variety of offerings this summer, and tonight we're going to talk to you about how we engage students in lots of different ways. First, we'd like to talk about our in-district traditional summer school program, which took place at Costa Mesa High School this summer, and it was designed for students who were unsuccessful in their first attempt at learning for specific courses in the areas of English Language Arts, Science, Math, History. We provided live, in-person instruction for these students, and the majority of these teachers were our very own Newport Mesa teachers. Additionally, at Costa Mesa High School, we also hosted two programs that were focused on enrichment and acceleration. First, we invited middle school students who were English Language learners to participate in a program to build their academic and literacy skills using avid strategies and kind of a fun and dynamic environment. And then, we also provided an opportunity for students who have demonstrated to us that they need to accelerate their math journey, and so there was a compacted middle school math program at Costa Mesa High School, which prepares students for the enhanced pathway if they're ready for it. Next, we're excited about a new partnership that we established with our local community college partner, Orange Coast College. They hosted a collection of different NMUSD-only classes, meaning that it's just our kids, they're not mixing in with adult learners. First, we're proud of the extended dual enrollment opportunities for our students. They got to explore video game design, architecture, social media journalism, and then we also had an opportunity for our long-term English Language learners, who connected with the English instructors at Orange Coast College and focused in on reading and writing skills that will equip them not only in high school, but then hopefully better prepare them for college. These courses were free of charge. They allowed students to earn both high school and college credit, and they were voluntary. Kids got to opt into those. Our partnership with OCC also included more traditional summer offerings, where students are remediating grades where they were unsuccessful during the school year. We partnered with them to provide instruction in algebra, Algebra II, and physical education, and those two were classes that were just for Newport Mesa students, and so they were really focused in on meeting the needs of our students. And they all took place at the OCC campus. The kids were excited about being in the college environment and took that seriously. Each summer, there are students who need to make up credits outside of those courses that I've already mentioned, that we call those our mesh courses, and in order to meet that need, we continue our partnership with the Department of Education to provide instruction in those areas. And so, students in this program completed either work online through the edgenuity program, which our district has used for years, or a paper-pencil option where they would meet independently with teachers. Furthermore, over the last number of years, we've provided some online options for acceleration for students that are in high school, where they can, through one-on-one instruction, get ahead and create more opportunities for their schedules during the regular school year. The final secondary program that we want to highlight this evening is our Bridge to 7th and Bridge to 9th grade enrichment sessions that were hosted at all of our middle and high schools. We know that the transition from elementary to middle school and middle school to high school can be intimidating, so our teachers and administrators put together a fun and welcoming chance to meet new friends, explore the campus, and learn about all the great things that are there to offer at the middle and high schools. Those were voluntary programs. All students coming into those schools were invited to take part. So in total, our secondary program served just over 1,400 students, and in that, our students earned over 3,600 credits, and most importantly, we were proud to serve some of our most important student groups and stay connected with them. As we look at, as we reflect upon our summer and kind of look at what our successes and challenges, we can point to a variety of successes. First, we continue to prioritize live, in-person instruction during the summer, recognizing that whenever possible, our students learn best from a real classroom experience. We're excited about the expansion of the dual enrollment opportunities over the summer, and our growing partnership with OCC is certainly a great thing for kids. We found success in consolidating our in-house program from two campuses to one, which helped us better address some of the summer staffing issues that we faced. And finally, our summer programs have been a wonderful opportunity for leadership growth as well. Our excellent summer admin interns are the ones leading those summer programs, and we're proud that one of our summer admin interns, Matthew Mason, later interviewed and was selected to become the next assistant principal at Costa Mesa High School, so it's an excellent growth opportunity. The summer also had its challenges that we will continue to face. We know that a significant portion of our summer school program is designed for students that struggle in school, and so we're consistently looking at more ways that we can engage and connect with students that struggle to do so during the year, and we know that we need to, you know, try to provide more for them over the summer. The summer was also particularly challenging for a lot of our families in our community. Leaving the home didn't seem like an option, as some of our families were seeing news reports about immigration stops and were concerned about what that would mean, and so engagement and attendance certainly was affected, but we were able to connect with the students that obviously showed up to campuses. Finally, during our first year partnering with OCC, you know, we navigated kind of the hurdles of kind of combining the K-12 system with the community college system, and we're excited about continuing that partnership, but just kind of learning by way of kind of going through it for the first time. So all in all, we're proud of the programs that we've put on in this district this summer and the quality and the variety of what they've been able to serve. It provided more opportunities for kids to do more and different, interesting things, and we're excited about growing that for the coming year. So with that, I'd like to introduce my colleagues, Dr. Heather Cash and Rob Nichols, who will share about our students with special needs.
Good evening. So, extended school year is not actually summer school. We're great with acronyms in special education, and we call it ESY, which means it is an extension of the former school year, the previous school year. It's a service that's written into an IEP that's determined by an IEP team, and we often, we refer students based on regression and recoupment, but what that really means is a student who experiences that summer slide that takes longer than normal to recoup that learning. So we'll use data from a previous break in school to determine if a student takes a longer period of time to recoup the learning that they had had before. Those students are recommended for ESY services during the summer. Not all students with IEPs are recommended for ESY services, and those services are individually tailored to whatever that student needs. It might be academic instruction, it might be speech services, OT, any of the related services that are on the student's IEP. This year, we had 45 certificated staff, 78 classified staff at five elementary campuses, one secondary campus, and we served 349 students with IEPs. Importantly, importantly, our campuses were the same campuses as our summer scholars programs. That started last year, and it provided us an opportunity to have mainstreaming opportunities, to access those enrichment programs, and for our students to engage with each other. Our students benefit from being around typical peers, and we've worked hard with our administrative interns during the summertime and our special education coordinators to partner in the leadership of those programs. We do give a parent survey at the end of our experience, and we have amazing and positive reviews. You see some of them here. In fact, all of our reviews were either excellent or very good. Everybody really appreciated their time spent in ESY. It is a service, and so our goal progress is our data that we look at. We don't have the same kind of reading data that we would be sharing, but we are looking for a lack of regression when students return to school in the fall. But most especially, we partner with our Transportation Department. Our bus drivers and our Transportation Department provide extra loving care to our students with IEPs. They have special equipment, they have special seat belts, sometimes they need a little bit of extra patience, sometimes their timeline is delayed ever so slightly, but they always come with loving care for all of our students. They communicate very, very well with us, so I want to really shout out all of our bus drivers and Shelley Humphrey and Kevin Suckington, who take so much loving care with our students with special needs during the summertime and during the school year. Next, you'll be hearing from Laura Del Pash, our Director of Multilingual Programs.
So I think you're all familiar with Summer Language Academy. Just a reminder, we hold Summer Language Academy the last three weeks of summer before teachers come back, and that gives our students an opportunity to participate in the other summer programs that you heard Mr. Carmona speak about, so they could actually do both. They could do something at OCC and also do Summer Language Academy, which is great. So it is a program for our newcomer students at really the emerging and early-expanding levels. It serves district-wide from all of our campuses. We provide busing so students can get there. This year, we represented five home languages, which is always exciting to have students from all different languages and cultures together on one campus. We partner with Cal State Fullerton, and so we've continued the great program that we've had in the past. We provide professional development for our teachers so that they can carry those practices back into their classroom. Not all ELD teachers. We have science, we have a Spanish teacher, ELA, so very exciting that we have a mix of different content areas. So most exciting this year, we had some Summer Language Academy graduates who really maxed out of their level, but they wanted to continue to participate. So this year, we piloted a Leadership Academy with just a few students. One of them is here, is actually a student-born member, Mr. Lopez, which is very exciting. So they spearheaded, I hope to be our first class of our Leadership Academy. We hope to continue. They ended up working with our ELD TOSA, Arlene Salazar, and they mentored students in summer language. They created some resources for us. Next summer will be our 10th Summer Language Academy, so they worked very hard on some interviews and some content to create a video for us for next year. So that was the highlight for our summer that we'll hopefully be able to expand and continue. So how wonderful that students want to come back even though they've technically graduated. So we had a great summer, and I think Ms. Flores is going to wrap us up.
We've really been looking forward to the opportunity to share about our summer programs and appreciate all of your support. With your guidance and our upcoming strategic planning, we believe that we are in a perfect position to reflect and refine our summer programs. As we do that, we are keeping the following in mind. It's always important to think about what is the purpose of our programs? Is the purpose to provide academic support, intervention, acceleration, enrichment, or a combination of all of the above? What's the impact of our programs on our students, on our families, on our staff, and then also keeping that greater footprint of our summer landscape and the impact on all of our departments that are serving our students over the summer months? How is our community engaging with our summer programs? What do we want to look like? What do we want that to look like moving forward? We always want to ensure that our programs are in alignment with our district's priorities and our goals, and thinking about that as we move forward. And then finally, are these large programs financially sustainable? What is that going to look like for us as we move forward? So with that, and we are grateful for your leadership and your support, and we look forward to what's ahead, but we are so grateful for your time and your support. forward to what's ahead, but we are so grateful for your time and your support and listening to our musical chairs of directors up here this evening. And with that, we'll open it up for any questions.
We, our first question is from our student board member, Jeremy Lor.
Hello. I just wanted to say, first off, as a student at early college high school, it's almost part of our culture to take classes over the summer, whether they be at Coastline or through the district, to get ahead, because we're very focused on academics and graduating either with associate's degrees or IGETs. So, I'm really glad that the district is taking these opportunities to provide courses either related to dual enrollment or regarding stuff like American Democracy, economics, and accelerated math courses. I was just wondering, so I personally took part in both American Government and Economics over the summer this past few months. I was just wondering, so I was able to receive a spot in the course, but I know some of my friends had difficulty getting a spot in the courses because they were quite popular, especially from my school site. So, I was wondering, how difficult can it be for students to actually get a spot in these courses and make sure that they are able to take them if they want to?
Thank you very much for that question. Yeah, there tends, that tends to be a popular course. Those two courses tend to be popular, so it really comes down to how many we can offer over the summer and really trying to prioritize students that, you know, for some reason may really need that course. And so, you know, we look at kind of how many we can offer every summer and try to get as many students as possible, so.
Thank you.
Trustee Anderson.
Thank you. I would echo that. I actually took that class as well when I was a Newport Mesa student, and that's why I got to graduate early, before early college existed. Um, yeah, I, I had one question about that as well, just how many students across the district are taking those two classes, and then if there's a possibility to possibly bring it back to a site that has very high attendance? And then I also just wanted to say thank you for the successes and challenges information, and those points, I think it's really helpful for us when we're making decisions and just for transparency and clarity, some of the amazing successes, and then also the challenges and how we can address them for next year. So, thank you.
And I can follow up with you. I don't know the numbers offhand, but I can follow up with you guys and provide that information.
Thank you. Trustee Crane.
Yes, hi. Thank you. Great presentation. I do love the fact that we're leveraging our relationship with OCC in order to increase the choices for our secondary school students, because typically, I think a summer school is elementary mostly. So, I do love the fact that we're opening up some pathways for our secondary school kids, because their, their schedules can be very impacted during the school year. That can also not only accelerate, you know, you were talking about, Jeremy, about an AA if you're going to ECHS, but you're also alleviating the schedule for other options and, you know, experimenting new for, you know, new classes and just discovering new interests during the school year, when, you know, you can kind of get into some of those classes during summer school. I do think it's a very good question, though, about sustainability, and I know you end with that, and it's very wise to do so, because we have a lot of discussion to do as far as sustainability and, and the depth and breadth of what we're offering right now is, I don't think can be beat in Orange County. And so, how can we, how can we sustain it? It is nice that we do offer summer school, because it does help ours teachers as well with income, you know? I mean, it is, it does generate some income for them, but we also need to figure out how we can balance and sustain. Thank you.
Trustee Murphy.
It's just a really short question, but as long as we're talking about sustainability. So, even though you don't have the numbers, but I mean, looking at this, I would imagine you'd have at least the same amount of students trying to enroll next year, if not more, right? Did you hear from anyone that they would be like not wanting to re-enroll next year?
There was a lot of positive feedback from the students and families, and you can, as you can imagine, with the many offerings that we provided for our students. And so, we look forward to being a part of that planning process and lean on your leadership and guidance as far as what that is going to look like moving forward.
But, I mean, I would imagine that most families having such a, having had such a positive experience are probably expecting to be able to do that next summer.
I think that is a true statement. I think it would also be wise of us, should we make any changes to our summer offerings as far as who is going to be able to attend, what that process is going to look like, that we get that information out, should there be any changes sooner than later? So that we can support our families in their summer planning process.
Thanks.
Trustee Ursulou.
Yeah, thank you so much for the presentation. I had a little question about when you were talking about the purpose and the intent and the impact of the program. I'm wondering, like, from the STAR data, it seems like when you looked at their benchmark from like their pre and post, that it looked like 65% and 15% either stayed or increased. So, that means 20 went down, right, on their benchmark? So, um, when the summer ended, was there, or is it possible in the future to reach out to those 20% of the families and be like, hey, Jimmy probably needs to be reading more. He literally had a lag this summer in terms of like financial sustainability, if we can target the kids that actually still dropped in the summer, so that they can kind of know that they need to do more reading or whatever it is that, that would help them not have that drop so much in the summer.
Absolutely. I think that's a great idea that we can take in consideration with our future planning and communication with our families.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you also for having data here with the reading data about how they progressed and how they're doing now, and I think it's just great. And I guess it's kind of a question, follow-up question with trustee Ursulou's, but for those students that maybe did not succeed in the summer school program, was that mentioned to their current teacher now, so that they are on sort of a, a watch with, with their teacher and potentially with, you know, a reading or math interventionist at their school?
Sure. I can't guarantee that there was a specific conversation with every single one of those teachers regarding those students, but what I can tell you about is that there's been close collaboration with the planning between our team, the summer team, and the teaching and learning team. So, along with the assessment team. So, it's really been a collaborative effort among the Ed Services Department. We worked closely with the full-time support teachers at all 22 elementary schools to determine who were those students that were participating in that small group reading instruction to provide that summer intervention. And I know that there's continuous review of that data. So, while I can't guarantee every individual one, I can tell you that there's that close collaboration amongst our Ed Services teams.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Great presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, 18, which is the consent calendar. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Pearson, seconded by trustee Anderson. Roll call, vote.
Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
Trustee Ursulou.
Yes.
Trustee Murphy.
Yes.
Trustee Pearson.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee McElroy.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes. Okay, motion carries, 7-0. Okay, now, we're moving on to Discussion/Action Calendar, 19A, and we have two.
President.
Oh, excuse me. Sorry. Trustee Anderson.
Thank you. I just wanted to highlight 18B12, which was the contract with Costa Mesa Police Department to ratify the SRO contract. I just wanted to say thank you to our Costa Mesa PD partners and our city partners for working together and also adding some key pieces into that item, like a risk assessment and just better shared information. And I think too, with, this is the first time we had CMPD and Newport PD and our, and our department working together, so thank you for that. And then I also just wanted to point out, page nine or 10 with their salary updates is missing from our agenda, so I just had to make sure it was part of the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, Discussion/Action, 19A, and we have two comments on 19A. Would you guys like to comment? Okay, I'm going to call you guys up. All right. First up, we have Andy Godinett, Godinez, sorry, if I am butchering your last name.
Good evening, everyone. I come to you as an NMUSD alumni of Woody Elementary, incident intermediate, and Newport Harbor High School. Go Dolphins, Seabees, and Sailors in that order. I'm also a 43-year-old lifelong resident of Westside Costa Mesa, and my daughter will soon be attending your school district. I believe my lived experience in your school district and growing up in the Shawamar Drive community in Westside Costa Mesa makes me a sort of subject matter expert in what I came here to speak to you guys about today. Gangs, drugs, and crime were commonplace for me as I attended your schools, and my family was not immune to the negative influences and impacts that come from them. I came to speak against the expansion of the GRIP program that's on, on discussion today, as I understand that it was originally introduced at my former elementary school, Woodyear. I had the pleasure of speaking to one of the parents whose child participated in the program, and although she didn't have much to complain about the program, she didn't have much to say on it either. She did mention that the kids would meet once a month during regular school hours and that they would write down goals they would like to achieve. If met, they would be given gift cards to local restaurants and such. I do believe that this program is well-intentioned, but that there are a vast number of resources and programs that would better serve the district's time and money. I have no issues with the presentation of officers to grade school and junior high students as, as a profession, though, but I believe that the school should be left for the faculty and the staff to, to see, hold on, sorry. Law enforcement in schools are already ingrained in the renewed SRO programs in our high schools, and I believe that their presence in grade schools will lead to a normalization of a punitive climate. I had the liberty of attending a leadership program recently that gave me a backstage tour to our law enforcement in Orange County and had the pleasure of meeting our district attorney, our former public defender, Martin Schwartz, and our Honorable Judge Maria D. Hernandez. And the most inspiring takeaway that I had from that joint presentation was how all the different sides of that law enforcement community that was there giving that presentation were able to work together in their belief of shutting down local juvenile hall school in our area, because they all had a collective ideology in believing that you shouldn't see themselves as criminals. I feel that this program will normalize law enforcement in the, in the new proposed grade schools like Wilson and Ray on the west side. I can only speak on behalf of my lived experience, and I wholeheartedly believe that I was able to skirt gang, drug, crime, the, the drug, the gang, drug, crime life because of the enrichment programs like youth sports, arts, and theater after-school programs where I had a safe place to be myself. I have recently heard about how they are already, how there are already programs with funding that are ready to be provided to the kids in the community, and I ask that you please provide those alternatives instead of the proverbial school-to-prison pipeline. This doesn't mean that I, that I don't believe we shouldn't address crime, but statistics show that there is a direct correlation between poverty rates and crime rates, and I don't think this is fixing that or addressing that. There's also a potential of increased criminalization of students, particularly those of colors and students with disabilities.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Eric Jimenez, and I've been a Costa Mesa resident for over 25 years. I went to Woodyar Elementary, Ray Elementary, Enson, and Newport Harbor, and, and I'm also very concerned about the expansion of GRIP programs in our schools. As a kid raising Costa Mesa, I was fortunate enough to benefit from after-school enrichment programs offered by nonprofits like MICA CDC. At the time, they provided strong mentorship by college student providers, or college student volunteers, community leaders, and trusted adults, not by armed officers or an intimidating government employee working for the DA's office. MICA CDC's volunteers had a deep heart for enriching the lives of youth through love and genuine support, not through coercion and fear, which is what concerns me about the GRIP program. In addition, reports done by the ACLU have reported concerns expressed by other community organizers regarding the effectiveness of GRIP, namely that rather than being a diversion program, it operates more like an informant program. And to me, that's alarming. If I was a young elementary school kid feeling as if I was being policed at a young age in school, how do you think that will affect my identity and school connectedness growing up as a young adolescent? Studies have shown that when schools outsource discipline to officers, students may interpret that as a signal their school is unsafe or that adults in school won't protect or invest in them, undermining belonging and academic engagement. Policing our children has to stop. As far as expanding the GRIP programs to Ray Elementary and Wilson, I believe it would be a misallocation of resources due to these schools already having elementary school psychologists. To my understanding, social workers and school community facilitators that can directly impact the schools or the students in a much more trusted way. I would encourage the district to limit its police presence in schools and allocate budget towards school psychologists and trusted local community organizations instead, if not already. As a community leader for Bright Youth, a community-based organization focused on bringing resources that inspire growth and hope for today's youth, we have a heart for our community, and we seek to be the bridge to much-needed support and resources that increase educational opportunities, access to mental health resource, gang intervention, and more. We do this through collaboration, relationship-building, events, and civic engagement, because we want to provide a breadth of options for our youth and overall community, not because we foresee a future behind bars for them, but because we see a bright one full of opportunity and options. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, 19A. It is approve the renewal agreement between Orange County District Attorney's Office and Newport Mesa Unified School District to facilitate the OC GRIP Waymakers Case Manager Component for the 2025-2026 school year. Dr. Torres.
Yes, in front of you tonight, the board has a contract to approve that renewal agreement between the OC District Attorney's Office and Newport Mesa Schools to facilitate the OC GRIP Waymakers Program. In that contract tonight, for your consideration this evening, is to place that program at Ray, Woodyear, and Wilson. That's been outlined in the suggested contract for this evening.
Thank you. Do I have a motion in a second, and then we can have discussion?
So moved.
Oh, wait. I'm sorry. It's only just, not student board members, but just board members on this one. Thank you.
So moved.
Oh, point of order. Yes.
Per bylaw, per bylaws 9150, student board members can make a motion.
Oh.
Yeah, that's in there.
So, do you want to continue with your motion?
I, I know that because he asked, he asked me, so I looked it up.
Oh.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not a bylaw.
That's great.
We pulled it up, and we were talking about it, and, and, you know, I'll read it real quick if, if you want me to.
Sorry. No, you're good. Okay. Would you like to continue with your motion?
Yes, so moved.
And can you, you have to name the motion when you make one. Thank you.
Approve the renewal agreement between Orange County District Attorney's Office and Newport Mesa Unified School District to facilitate the OC GRIP Waymakers Case Manager Component for the 2025-2026 school year.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Moved by student board member Jeremy Lor, seconded by trustee McElroy. Discussion.
Can I make a substitute motion?
Go ahead.
Go ahead. If you want to. Whatever. Go ahead.
Trustee Ursulou.
Great. And I'd like to make a substitute motion to approve the renewal agreement between the OC DA's office and Newport Mesa to facilitate GRIP at Woodyar and Enson, two schools instead of the three that were listed in the contract.
So, we have a, do I have a second to the substitute motion? Okay, so now that we have a substitute motion on the floor, what it is, is we vote to accept the substitute motion so that we could bring the substitute motion for a vote. So, there's actually, would be two votes. So, if the substitute motion, to vote for the substitute motion fails, then we don't go to the substitute motion for an actual vote. So, it's a vote to have a vote, if that makes sense. So, let's vote for this, oh, sorry, any discussions right now? I'd like to open that up for discussion on the substitute motion.
Trustee Crane.
Yes. Trustee Ursulou, would you, would you like to expand on why you'd like to have a substitute motion?
Yeah, um, I would. Thank you.
Well, I always like to know why, because.
Yeah. I think, so, for the past several months after, so I was, I missed the June vote on this initially. I was out for health reasons, and so, I have an understanding of sort of where the, where the thermometer is, because I watched that board meeting on YouTube from home. And it's, it's obvious that there are, GRIP has been around since 2007, and like all programs out in the social services field, there's evolution over time, and programs need to evolve over. and programs need to evolve over time and shift with the times. And so in thinking of GRIP, we, some of us had the opportunity to sit down with the district attorney's office and learn more about sort of the history of the program and the dynamics of the program and the potential future of the program and where it's looking to grow. And through those conversations, it was, it became evident that replicating the current model in three sites just doesn't make sense because they were so open to thinking of how we can reform the program and update it and modernize it. And so when you want to update and modernize something, you want to pilot it. And you don't necessarily do a pilot program in three locations. You kind of hone in on one and you perfect it and then you re-disseminate it. So it's kind of like a go slow to go fast again process. Where with this model, we could do it in Woodyer, and then Enson is where the Woodyer students go. So that would actually give GRIP another couple of years with those students. So you get them for one or two years in the elementary. But by continuing on to Enson, which we got a couple of letters today in support of GRIP from residents of Newport Beach. So it sounds like they want this program over in their, in their community where our Woodyer students go for the pathway. So having it Woodyer to Enson with some program modifications that get at some of the issues that folks that just spoke about the program. For instance, if you look at the GPAs of the kids in the program, they're pretty, they're relatively low. So to pull those students out of learning math and English and, you know, core course material just, just doesn't really make sense for that student body that we're trying to target with this program. So working with, again, the district attorney's office's staff to figure out, how do we do this program? After school or lunchtime or before school? I don't know. I don't know. But not taking them away from critical course material, which as a district, that's our job. Our job is to make sure that they can read and do math and do all of those things. So for us, it's a, it's a hard position to be in to take a kid out of that for a couple of hours of time. And then also the ability to have it. Our district is very unique. Again, why Woodyer and why Enson? Why that pathway? Instead of spreading out, again, wanting to just go deep and perfect the model versus haphazardly kind of going with the flow that we've had for two thousand and seven, twenty twenty-five. How many years is that? What is that, eighteen, eighteen years? Yeah. So it's been going on for a long time. So this is time for a natural revamp of it. The world is changing, times are changing. So let's pause for a second. We're still going to do it, still do it in these two schools. But the opportunity to update and modernize the program kind of comes up once in a while. Like this program is in many districts across the county, but we have an opportunity here that other districts might not have to pause and rethink it and to work with our district attorney who's here, who's here in the back today. Thank you for, for coming to the meeting, Mr. Spitzer. This is, this is a chance to make sure that that program can stay sustainable and be done, you know, there are different iterations of GRIP. They have a one-point-O and they have a two-point-O that they can sell to districts. One is actually no cost and one is for cost, the ten thousand per site, which is what we have. And that's the one that we're looking to, if we could update it and do it at these two schools, it would just be a way to continue to work on this and then figure out how to expand later rather than just signing off and rubber stamping our same old, same old contract with the three elementary sites where many people have voiced various concerns about it. So let's just pause and refine it. Another element that would be great if we could do it in the after-school, time zone or lunchtime or what have you. But, so there's, there's a little, there's a little document that I prepared that has sort of the six ways to shift GRIP. And we've shared it with the district attorney's office and with our staff here so that we could reach ideally more kids. So GRIP also tends to be, for those of you that don't know, heavily boy-focused. Many of the, of the ten kids that enroll per site, usually it's like nine, eight or nine of them are boys. So girls, what, what program do we have for the girls? We unfortunately have two recent shootings, murders of our students, and one that took place in Pico, the person I believe that drove the car was, was a young woman. So women also need, the girls actually need these kind of interventions to support them in their journey, growth and development. And the current mechanism of GRIP can't really account for that. So there's many little details that could be fixed if we could just pause, revamp for a year, and then see where it goes. So that's why my suggestion, trustee Crane, is for the Woodyer because it's been at Woodyer and it's comfortable there. And so let's expand and follow those kids into Enson and keep supporting them for a couple of years and then figure out how to do it in the elementarys.
Trustee Murphy?
Well, just to clarify, you're not saying to pause the program. It's just to pause the expansion of the program. So it has been at two sites. This, this contract is to increase the sites to three. What you're proposing is that we keep.
Two.
Two. So it's not to pause the program in any way, shape, or form. Just pause the expansion to another site is what we're proposing. And, and I, I'm in strong support of, of this for, for the reason that I've talked to the DA about, which is we are well aware of what's going on in the Costa Mesa community and some of the, the issues that our students and our families are facing. And I would like to take the next year to spend as much time as we can with Costa Mesa PD and the DA's office to make this program as, as good as it can be, the best it can be. I believe that we are dealing with situations with our kids and our families, especially what it, you know, with what's going on nationally and has been hitting us locally, that our kids and our families will need even more support from us to make sure that they are kept on the, on the right path, if you will, or given as many tools and resources to stay on that right path, to make those relationships that we know are important with PD, even with the DA's office and probation. But give us really the opportunity to expand it, to work with you and to expand the program. I want this program in as many, in terms of the training and the benefits of this information to be disseminated to as many families, schools, parents as we can. And I know that in our conversations, we have, you know, discussed that that would probably be what's best. You know, for, you know, not even for Newport Mesa, for other school districts, it might be having some, you know, issues with, with gang activity. And so that's how I look at this, is a great opportunity to expand a good program in terms of tweaking it, finding a way that we can leverage our resources, leverage the funding to be able to expand it. And so, so that's, that's why I'm in strong support of, of changing this particular motion or switching out the motion to the two schools and committing our time to work with the DA's office to figure out a way to expand the program.
Trustee Pearson?
Yeah. Can you, what does administration principals, what is their recommendation? The people that are in the schools, what, what is the actual recommendation from them?
Yeah, so we have had GRIP at two of our schools. We had it last year at Pomona and Woodyer. And both principals had been in support of the program. And so as we're speaking tonight about the schools that are listed in the contract, I can confidently say that the principal at Woodyer is in support of having that program returned to his campus.
And Pomona also?
Well, Pomona, we modified the grade levels. So you'll remember that we rearranged Pomona and Ray. And so it will no longer be at Pomona because those are the littles. Our littlest students are there, our youngest ones. And so it would be at Ray, and we have spoken with that principal, and she is also in full support of that program. If it were to be approved, if the board were to approve it, she would accept that at her school. Yes.
Trustee McElroy?
So it sounds to me that it seems to be working at the schools and they want to continue it. So adding a third school to me sounds like another, a great idea. More protection, more education, more mentor, mentoring. I don't know why we would not add another school. It would make no sense. I mean, we're here to protect our kids. We're here to teach them. We're here to mentor them. The program, this program is awesome. I have looked fully into it and researched it for months. I mean, they have soccer clubs during the summer. They're mentoring kids. They're not walking around, you know, intimidating. They're mentoring. You should watch the success stories. This is a great program. And I think it needs to be at all three schools. I think we all need to support it. And then I think we can look at it going into maybe a junior high next year when we are able to do that. Sounds like a great idea to me because those kids do go into Enson, and that is one of, you know, my, the schools that I oversee. And anything we can do to protect and to mentor and to teach our children at a young age is a fabulous idea. So reducing it and making it down to two schools and not adding a third is, to me, is, is not a good idea. And I'm in full support of Woodyer, Wilson, and Ray.
Student representative, Jeremy Lor.
I just wanted to ask a few clarifying questions. I know myself, maybe some of my peers in the audience might not be entirely privy as to all of the intricacies of what we're discussing here. So just to confirm, the schools it is currently at is Rea and Pomona or Woodyer?
It's currently at Woodyer.
Woodyer.
And it was at Pomona last year. Yes.
Okay, so.
And I say currently meaning that's what we had in contract last year. Right now, in September, we have no activity. So no school has it at this very moment.
Okay, thank you. And so the substitute motion is to continue the program at Woodyer and to implement the program at Enson to create a more streamlined elementary-through-middle-school pathway. And the original motion is to continue it at Woodyer and then have it be at Rea and Wilson as well?
Yes.
Okay, so by, through the substitute motion, no school would necessarily be losing access to the program as we wouldn't be going with three schools and only two instead? I can restate the question if you'd like. Okay. So currently, it would stay at Woodyer and then the substitute motion would keep it at two schools instead of three, expanding the program. But no school, or not expanding the program if we keep it at two, but no school would necessarily be losing access to the program.
Correct, because Ray currently does not have it.
Okay.
And Pomona will no longer have it because they only serve our youngest students now. So it wouldn't be appropriate for them. So those two schools would, would not be missing out on anything at this point.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Trustee Crane?
Yes, pragmatically speaking, I would want to keep our options open, which is, which is what our original motion offers us up to. It's not saying we will offer at three schools. I would, so for me, the substitute motion limits us and our staff from making the decision that is right for their campus. And so I think I would recommend that we adopt the original motion versus the substitute motion because that will give us the, the breadth and in offering up to thirty thousand dollars worth of funding and up to three schools, the option to maintain the program. So why would we limit ourselves while opting to trust our staff in making that decision because they're professionals and they're the ones who would know their campuses?
I would like to have a clarity on what the, what the contract does say because I don't think it says up to three. I, the way I read it, it says there are three, and the three are Wilson, Ray, and Woodyer.
The contract written by the district attorney's office states three schools. Our board agenda item says up to three schools.
Right.
Okay, so.
So I have, I have a couple of questions. What does, first, what does Costa Mesa PD want? Because, you know, what I want to make sure is that we are giving the community and our police the information that they want and, and we are, we are listening to their recommendations.
So when we knew we were going to be bringing this contract forward again and speaking with the DA's office, and I believe it was also stated at the meeting we had at the, at and with the district attorney and his team, we picked the schools and they were suggested based upon the activity that was happening on the streets of Costa Mesa. So we asked the police department what streets had the most activity that we needed to be concerned about, and then where were those schools located? And so that's how we arrived at those three schools.
Okay, and is the Costa Mesa PD still in support of that need today?
They are as of our last meeting when we had discussed it, yes.
Okay. And then I know that we have the DA here, and I would want to see if you want to come up and answer a question for us about. Thank you. You might as well speak while you're here. If we can have, talk to us a little bit about, you know, some of our trustees have some updates to the program. And the way that I'm reading the contract, there doesn't have those updates. So I just wanted to see what kind of updates you're willing to make to the program and, and what you see the need is for our three schools.
Very good. Thank you very much, Madam President, trustees, Dr. Superintendent, Dr. Smith. So let me, let me, let me say, having walked into these chambers, I'm very impressed by the prior presentations because when I met with three of the trustees, I kept hearing over and over about data-driven decisions. And I can see your staff understands exactly what you like to see. I, I've made it very clear from the very beginning, and I think it was alluded to, that this relationship has been going on for, you know, eighteen years. The original goal for GRIP in the first instance was to protect kids and protect the community. And, and I thought your speakers, the public speakers, were very, very eloquent on this matter because they grew up in the community, they lived the experience, and they're raising their kids in this community. So they are experts and they know what they believe they need. I don't assume for a second to think that we have all the answers. We're doing the best we can in dealing with very specific situations to deal with the feedback we're getting from your school sites and from the police department. We're then bringing individuals into the schools, our social workers, our deputy district attorneys, our investigators, our police officers, to do the best we can to keep those kids from making bad decisions that will, will actually increase the probabilities of a pipeline to prison. And no one wants to see that. So I've made a commitment with this district in particular, in this contract, that, and I sent you a letter to try to kind of set the stage. I think it's important to maintain the status quo. We're literally in the school year. Your district is recommending three schools. That is their expert opinion. The police department supports it, but when you suggested Enson, for example, we have not had conversations that have necessarily reflected that Newport Beach will supply personnel for Enson. I can engage in all those conversations, and one of the things I was going to request if you were to adopt this recommendation tonight is that there's an ad hoc committee appointed of three or less members, obviously, to work with me, my staff, my folks, to work through this next year to achieve some of the potential recommendations and reforms that have been put forward by your vice president. I'm open, I'm completely open to every suggestion and every recommendation. But I don't believe tonight it's appropriate to recreate the wheel as we are this far into the district year. I can only make a commitment that I will absolutely be willing to work with your ad hoc and the superintendent and his staff and the police department and Newport Beach Police to try to effectuate some of the outcomes that you're looking forward to and suggesting. But to do it tonight in a public forum, on the fly, I mean, I appreciate all the hard work. It's been outstanding. Your trustees that I met with are deeply committed, the three trustees that represent the Costa Mesa part of the district. I am so impressed. Many of you may know, I started as a school board trustee, I'm Breya Linda, and I was a high school teacher before I became an attorney. So I'm completely committed to this process and your work. Make no mistake, I don't think I'm walking in here as some special expert with, and I'm going to tell you how it's going to be for your district. It doesn't work that way. I need to work with you so you can tell us what you want from this program. But I do think, and I do appreciate the deference to your staff and to the police department because quite frankly, they do know the community or they're expected to, especially your site principals and staff. So what I'm respecting. So what I'm respectfully requesting tonight, and again, I'm happy to look at all these things, that you approve the three schools as recommended by the police department and your staff, that you appoint an ad hoc, so you make an amendment to the motion to ask the president, or I'm not sure how you effectuate that, to create an ad hoc of trustees to work with me and my staff over the next year during the term of the contract. And that we address every single issue that you believe the district needs to address. And that way, we move forward, we're addressing the needs now, we're having very comprehensive and good discussions about where we should be going. One of the big issues, you all know, is whether the social workers from GRIP need to be in your schools or can we do a program where we can train your already existing staff and counselors to do that work? I think we can get there. I actually think that's a fantastic idea. But you have to give me time to put that into practice and see if it's going to work. So again, I'm 100% open and committed to everything that's being suggested. But if you change the schools tonight, and I appreciate the vice president, look, she is, she is phenomenal, she's got great ideas, and she knows what she's talking about. I have nothing but respect for the work that she's done and the suggestions she's making and your other trustees. But if you go in that direction on the substitute motion, you're going to, you're going to put a little bit of a monkey wrench and a problem in my ability to administer the program now that the school year is here. So I would just take under submission the suggestion, understand from me, I've made these commitments. I will work with you, we will work with you. But please approve what's being recommended, appoint an ad hoc, or at least delegate to the president. Again, I'm sorry, I don't know how you work your ad hocks. But get me an ad hoc committee that I can work with through this year and we will address every single issue that you have so that you can feel satisfied. We're tailoring the program specifically for your district's needs. This is not a cookie cutter program. It needs to absolutely be appropriate for Newport Mesa Unified School District. I hope I've answered your questions. It may not, I may not have said what you would have liked me to say. But I'm, I'm simply trying to move things forward positively, respecting the recommendations of the police department and your staff and putting on the record unequivocally that I'm 100% committed to everything you want to effectuate, but I think we should work through an ad hoc.
Thank you, I appreciate that info. I'm going to ask for a couple more questions and then I would like to keep moving on. But thank you so much for that. I'm going to see if anyone else has questions for you.
Sure, of course.
Thank you, thank you.
And I have amazing people to answer all your questions.
Yeah, thank you so much for coming and bringing up there.
Probably put their purses down.
That's how we protect ourselves against.
We have the dais here.
All right, trustee, your solo?
Yeah, just a clarifying point. The contract that you wrote listed those three schools. Our staff didn't necessarily recommend them. Our staff, in the staff write-up, said no more than three, like up to three schools. But the contract language was what you wrote. You listed those three schools out. So again, in the spirit of letting our staff decide, if we were to vote tonight on the motion being up to three schools, would you all be okay working with our staff to identify what everyone feels are the best locations?
So my answer is absolutely, but I think we do need to answer, how did those three schools get identified in the contract? So this is Assistant District Attorney Katie David, or, yes?
Yeah, so, good evening. We did work with Costa Mesa PD to identify those schools as well as with your superintendent and staff. So if you guys identify three other schools in the Costa Mesa, with the Costa Mesa Police Department, we are open to working with three, three schools. I will say, as I've been able to talk to some of you, we have a neutral position from Newport Beach. And as DA Spitzer said, right now, for status quo purposes, it would be three schools in the Costa Mesa Police Department jurisdiction.
Great.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, and my follow-up question.
I just want to add on that. So that's how we came up with the schools. But I do think we do need to embark on a conversation equally. I mean, you are Newport Mesa. It's, it's appropriate and fair to have a conversation with Newport Beach Police and to work through this to see if they believe there's an issue. And you're all elected from your districts. I'm elected, I've been elected for over 30 years in this county or something. And we have to go out and we have to understand our constituents. And the last thing I want to do adverse to the police department at this point is pick a school and not be able to represent to this board that I have the police personnel who will go into Ensign. Right now, I'm being told I do not have the Newport Beach police personnel to go into Ensign. So if you approve Ensign, I've got to figure out how to staff the law enforcement component. And what I'm trying to submit to you and basically argue is that I'm not prepared tonight to resolve these outstanding issues. Can we do it over the course of a year? I think absolutely. And I think with appropriate representation on an ad hoc, we can between Costa Mesa Representative Trustees and Newport Beach Trustees, we can have those very important and meaningful conversations. But just to say three schools and then it is whatever it turns out, I'm not prepared to be able to tell you I can implement these programs in just any schools now. That's all I can tell you. I just have Costa Mesa Sergeant here tonight, who I understand is authorized to speak on behalf of the department. But I don't have Newport Beach here.
Definitely, and that was actually, my second point was the issue with not being able to staff the Newport Beach side. From my understanding, our SRO contract, we have the same SRO contract with the City of Costa Mesa Police and with the Newport Beach Police. And GRIP requires no more financing, if you will. None of the money that we give you in this contract goes to the PD. The PD already has an SRO contract, Costa Mesa does, and Newport Beach does. So it's just a matter of talking with Newport Beach, but they already have contracted SROs and it would be the same, similar job description that it is on the Costa Mesa side because those are the, we have the same contract with both city law enforcements. And GRIP does not give any of that funding to police, not in Costa Mesa, not in Newport. So that resource issue is kind of a moot one. But it is an issue of, hey, do you guys want to be in on this? Because Ensign is where the Whittier students go. And we've heard repeatedly that Ensign is a concern.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not arguing with you, Madam Vice President, at all. I would just submit to you, those are separate issues. A scope of work for a community service officer or a police officer in the school and what your contract says versus what work we are doing with our program are distinguishable for purposes of just work-related. And how Newport Beach allocates that, why they were willing to engage in that contract with the district and what they believe their officers or their community service officers should be doing is a conversation. I just don't think I can assume because there's an existing contract between the district and the police department in Newport Beach for, for, you know, general community or school campus security or interacting with kids or things like that, that that would also include the work we're doing through GRIP. I, I can't make that assumption. And quite frankly, in our feedback with Newport Beach, at least preliminarily, that's not an assumption that I think we could take tonight for purposes of this vote. That's all I'm saying.
I'm going to do trustee Murphy, then trustee Pearson.
No, just, it's just a statement, sort of again, summarizing some of our conversations, that the purpose of the ad hoc is to figure out, one, how we could potentially expand the program into more Newport Mesa schools, to figure out all the right folks that we need to talk to, all the right agreements. But also, I think what you and I talked about, that I mentioned earlier than I am really excited about, is figuring out a way we can expand what works with GRIP to, into the way that we expand it here into other school districts that may need it. That's what I also think is the benefit of us moving forward with an ad hoc and continuing these conversations, not only just for Newport Mesa, but for other school districts who might have GRIP in their, in their schools currently. And, and that's my understanding of what could be, come out of, what could come out of this that would be a huge benefit.
Trustee Murphy, that's why I'm so excited. When I met with, with the three trustees, I was so excited with a lot of the thoughts that came out of that. Trustee Anderson as well. Look, you have some tremendous ideas. I think it gives me an opportunity, maybe by eliminating social workers on our dime or trying to figure out funding, using existing school resources to provide that if we can do the training, that is a great opportunity for expansion. But we need to appreciate one thing. If I do that for your existing counselors and mental health professionals and other personnel and we expand, I have to find more law enforcement personnel and I have to find more deputy district attorneys. Because you know, we're doing, my prosecutors are doing the disciplinary and suspension hearings. I mean, we're staffing that in kind because we think it's an important public service. So we're, we're spread pretty thin, like all governmental agencies. And even if I am intrigued, and I am, by the social worker concept here, in order to expand, I have to find exponential number of new resources on, in other fronts, right? So again, please, again, I'm hoping you'll support the original motion with a staff recommendation with the three schools. I, I understand the vice president's point, but these were the three schools. I thought we had consensus with the school personnel and the police department. And then we can work through this next year to put all these great ideas and issues on the table.
Trustee Pearson?
First of all, thank you so much for being here.
Of course.
Obviously, you're showing your commitment to our community, to our students, to the safety for our teachers, our, our kids, our parents, for everyone, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Trustee McElroy and I both sat with Chief Miner about, two weeks ago when we thought about bringing this back up. And at that time, he saw no need for us to be at Ensign. He had, came right out of his mouth, he had no, he mentioned that we already have programs in place at Ensign, something different than the SROs. I don't remember the name of it, do you?
Well, it hasn't started yet, that's exactly what he said. He says he supports the program, but he needs to make sure that there's a need for it.
Right, and he didn't think that there was a need for it right now because of the extra programs, what he, what he had said. So we did sit in his office, we did bring it up to him. And at that point, he didn't feel like there was, there was a need yet.
But I also think that he didn't understand the program totally and he said he had just started doing research on it. So we need to do more, we need to meet with him again and give him more information and then go from there, but that's a whole different subject. We need to get back to the original. Thank you very much for being here and thank you for holding these three spots for us over the last 90 days.
Trustee, are you done, trustee Pearson? Trustee Anderson?
Yeah, go ahead. Trustee McElroy brought this item forward. I wanted to hear your comments before I responded because I had responded the last meeting.
Do you not have another comment?
I just.
Just you, you don't have?
I was just going to thank, I was going to thank him. What I was going to say, I just said.
Trustee Anderson?
Thank you. I appreciate the conversation. I appreciate your entire team being here tonight. It's the first time I've ever been called in front of the Board of Supervisors to have a meeting with the DA about a program, so it was a little surprising to me. The, I would love to hear, since we have you here, because the first time that I learned about the GRIP 2.0 program was in that meeting. I don't think that it's part of the website and it's not, it hadn't been explained to me, at least. So I would love, while you're here, if you could walk us through, particularly because there's a capacity issue, what you offer for schools that have GRIP 2.0 and what GRIP 2.1 is.
Sure, so Shannon Back, I'm a deputy district attorney. And GRIP 2 was started because we didn't have the resources to get to all of the schools that were requesting our services for GRIP 1. And so we came up with GRIP 2, which is staffed by teams of volunteer deputy district attorneys, volunteer deputy probation officers who have other assignments that they are assigned to full-time and they volunteer their time to spend with our GRIP 2 schools. So throughout the year at our GRIP 2 schools, those schools receive a parent education class, a faculty education class, and three student curriculum classes. Currently, all of our GRIP 2 schools are elementary schools throughout the county. And that's how it has been since the inception of GRIP 2. They've always been elementary schools. GRIP 2 schools are also able to participate in some of the larger scale incentives that we do provide throughout the school year. They do not receive one-to-one services with our case managers or one-to-one services for the parents.
Okay, and do you currently have capacity to expand the 2.0 component of GRIP?
All of those spots are currently taken by other schools.
Thank you. And so one of the things that we have had conversations about, and I appreciate, again, the transparency during that meeting, from when this program started quite a while ago, I think 2007. And now, particularly in our district, one of the conversation pieces that we had that I think was illuminating for everyone was the amount of money and support that we have dedicated to supporting our students, particularly those who are most vulnerable in our district, including a lot of the support that is provided for schools who do not have the resources that we have. So some school districts may not have an elementary school facilitator at their site that's communicating about attendance, about achievement directly with parents. Other school districts do not have an elementary psychologist on site, which we have. We've committed to that. We have heard resoundingly from parents that that is so, so, that was so needed and from teachers that they appreciate having that ready access, that it's not for special ed, it's not for IEPs, it is for some of the similar intervention. We also have social workers. We also have three SROs within each city that if there are certain things that come up, they are on standby to come in. And so I think, for me, the schools that were put on the, on the contract are all in my area. I went to Wilson Elementary, I am there all the time. I live across the street from Whittier, I'm very familiar with these sites. And there are some needs and the Whittier principal does want this for a few students. We have a new principal coming in at Wilson. She does not have exposure to this. I would like her, and I think this is why some of us voted no for it before, to have the opportunity to use the resources that we already have in place at that site. To, the status quo is for it to be at Whittier. And I've heard that tonight, the capacity is a concern, status quo is a concern. We're not removing this program from a site that is requesting it. And so we also have, we've also changed dramatically in the way that we budget even as a district. We have the LCAP, the Local Control and Accountability Plan, of which we added an item for family and community engagement, of which we have allocated millions of dollars to improving those systems and support. And so I understand that there are some, some people who want this program because to have a program sounds appealing. It's not necessary for some of the newer sites that have been discussed in this contract. One of the pieces that I think is really key and why I highlighted the changes in the Costa Mesa SRO contract is to get data about the specific needs. Anecdotal, we're seeing a lot of graffiti on one street, does not translate to a need or impact at an elementary site. It's a very different conversation to have gang reduction from students who might currently be in a gang versus a student who is in fourth grade, doesn't know what a gang is, has never interacted with police and is now having that come to their school site. We are, today at Estancia, the army recruiting truck came. I had five calls from people who didn't know why the army was on site at our school and were very upset and frightened. We are in a different situation now than we were in the past. And so that's where a lot of these concerns are coming from. If we were able to do GRIP 2.0, which I don't, I don't know if we are able to change that, but if we can have you guys work, have, have the DA staff come and, and work alongside our facilitators and our social workers and some of our parents, that would be amazing. That's the support that we need at multiple school sites. I know your goal is to have this at every school. So I think there's a difference from need based on data that it's not there yet for those three school sites. If there's an option to provide 2.0 at some other schools, that's a different conversation. And so again, this isn't to say that, I also, so we have community schools. Again, that was the conversation we had with you. There are a lot of differences between law enforcement, truancy, and what we're currently doing in our school sites. And I'm glad you were able to be here to see all of the things that we're doing. We have community schools at three of the sites, the three sites that you guys have on this contract. That involves parent engagement, advocacy, speaking up for needs that they have at that site. None of those sites said, we want this program, we're identifying this as a need. There's a specific reason why we have those pros, those processes. So I respect the parents that at one side are wanting this. The other two sites are not wanting that. The, I wasn't going to speak at all on the program. I spoke on that extensively last time. I do, I do have two concerns about the actual contract. I can appreciate, we went from having a one-page contract. That was quite brief. So I, I appreciate the effort in clarifying some of the language and some of the programmatic support. I, section L was a little bit unusual. I've never seen a section that asks if we have been influenced about anything. Section W and, and X are about news, information, release, and media. And they, they discuss the DA staff and the probation staff and waymaker staff, but it doesn't talk about our families or our students. And looking on the website for both the DA's unit and department and the nonprofit, which is a separate entity, there are parent and student photos all over them. To me, it's concerning if there is a student or a family who might actually be impacted by gang activity to be broadcasting their faces anywhere in public. And so I think that's an important addition for a, a contract. That's some of the reason why I asked for more than one page because there are some of those pieces that protecting our students and their privacy, I think, is very important. So I, you know, I think we, when we have the SRO data, we can, you know, maybe have more specific conversations. Maybe we can add this up to three school sites based on data. So that, I understand the conversation again about Newport Beach. I think it's telling though, if the police chief in Newport is saying it's not a need because our Whittier students go to Ensen. So when we're hearing that there's a need for this, but at Ensen, there's not really a need and the Newport police chief who was having the conversations with the SRO is not saying this is a need. Again, it causes a lot of questions. So I really, I respect you being here. I really respect the ongoing collaboration. I think you guys have been great with that, particularly Kated David. Thank you so much for all those conversations. I think you've, we've talked with lots of us. So that's, I think that's a, a lot of, we've spent a lot of hours on this and over the summer. I don't, I think it impacted a lot of us in ways that we didn't expect. We were able to hear from community members in new ways that really have the lived experience, as you said, DA Spitzer, and are the experts on this. So thank you.
The only response, may I?
Yeah, you may respond.
The only response on the contract, I will tell you, is if you look at, I just found it. I think it's amendment, yeah. So if you look at page two, C. Charlie, there's no amendments unless they're agreed by both parties. So if you designate your superintendent, like for example, if there's some changes the board would like to see, and you can, you don't have to do that now on the fly, if confidentiality, photos, things like that. Those are minor amendments that are in the spirit of advancing the contract. And we can do that ministerially between the superintendent and myself. That wouldn't necess, that wouldn't hold anything up. It would just be something that the contract allows us to amend. And it would be, they would be minor items. I don't mean minor in terms of the import, but they don't detract from the agreement itself. So we'd be happy to accommodate those if the superintendent felt that those were in the best interest of the district.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, we've, obviously as a board, we've talked about this a lot. We've had it back now for our second meeting. So I just want to thank you for all of your support and all of your work with us. You know, as I'm looking at the fact that we have our CMPD, our, our staff requirements, we've requested requests and parents and community members that have liked this program and see value in it. You know, I, I believe that there are three sites that have been chosen for a reason. And, you know, reasons that they see more often every day than I would see. So I have to, as a board member, I take recommendations from staff and then, you know, act upon those. I'm, I'm in favor of those three schools of Wilson, Ray, and Whittier because I do see that that is a need and that is a need that we have been outlined by, by the Costa Mesa PD, by our schools, by some of the issues that we have seen. You know, I am very in support of student safety. And I believe that this is a program that does help us with student safety. And while there might be some updates, of course, that we can make to this program, it is the program that we have that is a, the only game reduction program that, that we have in, in place right now that is on the table. So with that being said, I wanted to clarify the motion that we have, the motion that we have right now on the floor and then the subsequent motion. The current motion, because I, I heard trustee Crane say something, but the current motion that our student board member made was for the contract as is, which is for the three schools. It doesn't say up to, it says specifically the three schools, Wilson, Ray, and Whittier. And then we have a subsequent motion on the table for Ensen and Whittier. And with that, I actually am going to call for the vote on the subsequent.
No, I have a point of order. That's not what the student board member's motion was. The student board member's motion was to accept the item as approved, which is for up to three schools. It does not, the motion that he made is not for the three schools.
They, that he, he read it exactly the way it is in the, on the discussion action on, on our agenda. And it said, approve the renewal agreement between Orange County District Attorney's Office and Newport Mesa Unified School District to facilitate the OCGrip Waymakers Case Manager Component for the 2025-2026 school year. And that's what he said. And that is the contract that has those three schools.
The motion is for up to three schools. He recommend, again, point of order. That's not what he said. He's, he's new to this. Unfortunately, this is a very important item and I don't want to put that on him, but he approved the motion as it was listed and it says for up to three schools.
I don't know, are, I, I see it on the, on the agenda differently.
We, we listened to the recording and it's exactly what President Weigand just said. He read it and it was seconded. The exact verbiage from 19A.
That's what I recall.
Now, actually, since there is a subsequent motion on the table, we've, substitute motion, excuse me. We need to actually vote to see if that substitute motion is going to come to a vote. So right now, I'm going to direct Sam to do a roll call vote on the substitute motion, which is for Ensen and Whittier. And this is actually a vote to bring it to a vote. Vote for a vote, right? Got it?
Yes.
Isn't he port of orders in clarity on that one?
This is the vote that she mentioned, bring Ensen into.
Ensen and Whittier. Just have Ensen and Whittier.
Yeah, so this is that vote.
So this is the vote to.
To vote, to bring it to a vote.
Got it. Okay.
Just withdraw.
Yeah, let's just withdraw that then.
You, you want to withdraw the substitute motion?
Okay, so that motion has been withdrawn. And so the motion on the floor is, it has a, has a first and a second, right?
Okay, so Sam, roll call votes. Student Board Member Jeremy Lor.
Yes.
Trustee Weigand?
Yes.
Trustee Soylu?
No.
Trustee Murphy?
I know, I know, but this is not how we discuss the writing in this.
Point of order?
Point of order.
Our student board members asking questions and as his being first time up on the dais, I am explaining procedures to him.
Let's continue with the vote, please. Trustee Murphy?
That's why we have microphones. They need to be communicated.
Trustee Murphy?
During a meeting.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
No.
Trustee McElroy?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Five, two.
All right, moving on. Thank you, DA.
Very much.
Thank you, Sam. Moving on, 19B, approve the 2024-2025 unaudited actual report. Mr. Dixon?
I never thought I'd be following a district attorney at a board meeting presentation. So thank you for this experience. Okay, good evening, board. Tonight, I'm going to be presenting to you and recommending approval of our 2024-25 unaudited actuals report. I'm going to provide a brief presentation and then see if there's any questions at the end. So tonight, we're asking for your approval, the unaudited actuals report for last fiscal year. And quite simply, all this report is, it's the actual revenues and expenditures for last year. So the last report you saw before this was the estimated actuals. This is once we actually know how much we received in revenue and how much we spent for that year. The theme, when looking at that report through the numbers, it's clear that our district made significant investments into the preparation of capital improvements that occurred this past summer. And to give some context on that, we had, we saw $14 million more in service costs for last year than we did in the year prior. And those service costs are related to architectural design services, pre-construction management services, division estate architect fees for plan approvals. I mean, it was significant. You could tell you, you had a very robust summer program coming. And one point on that regard is that the bulk of the construction cost, because as you know, that construction actually occurred over summer, that's actually in this fiscal year. So that's not reflected, those costs are not reflected in the year end for the 24-25 estimated actuals, but you will see them this year. Our revenues, I'm sorry, there we go. Our expenditures increased 13.7% over prior year and our revenues decreased slightly by 0.4%. And the primary reason for the revenue decrease is because we no longer saw the COVID relief dollars last year. Versus the year prior, they were winding down. So that's why you see that slight decrease in our revenues. And as you can see on the chart, last year was the first time in many years the district spent more than it received. But there's a story to that. And when you look at the whole budget cycle for last year, starting with the adopted budget, it was planned throughout the entire year that we were going to spend more than the revenue we were going to receive. And it's very consistent from adopted budget in June, all the way through both interim reports and even into estimated actuals. And I think it's really important to, to note that the year prior in 23-24 was perhaps the highest reserve levels the district had ever seen at 23.8%. So that far exceeded the 17% threshold that we, we use on our indicators chart, which I will show later in this slideshow. So we made a conscious effort over the past several years to really build up the funds necessary to support those improvements that we did this summer. And that's what these numbers tell me. And of course, obviously, I, being here, I can now talk to staff and know that that's the case. But even if I was just looking at it from the reports itself, it's, it's clear to me you're saving for something, something big. So as I, as I mentioned, this is exactly what the numbers tell me when I'm looking at the unaudited actuals report. But going forward, we know we can't make the same level of investment we did this year as we did last year. That takes time and we will get there. We'll, we'll methodically and logically build back up reserves, build back up facilities dollars. The good news is most of those expenditures were all one-time in nature. And so those drop off. So after the planning services last year and the construction costs that we see this year, we're going to see a, a writing of the revenues and expenditures starting next year. And so we'll see more of that as we get into our first and second interim reports this year. But I just want you to know that those were mostly one-time costs and so they're dropping off. And so our revenues and, and expenditures will just naturally fall into alignment beginning next year. Encroachments and transfers ended up being just over 95 million for last year. I've never really liked the word encroachment. I think it tells a, a false narrative or a false story. Really, when you hear the word encroachment, they're necessary services and programs that are essential for our students and they're only partially funded by the state or federal government and sometimes not at all. And so we call it encroachment. It makes it seem like it's a local issue when it's not. They're required programs and services that we have to use our local resources to help support. So I would call them local supports instead of encroachments. And then that, I kind of talked about that in the first bullet in here, but whereas transfers, transfers may be similar in the sense that they're supporting specific programs that we operate as a district. But those happen to be funds that we transfer out of the general fund to separate funds and it requires board action to do so. Whereas the, the local supports are operated within the general fund. The transfers actually go out to separate funds. A good example of that is our nutrition services fund in Fund 13. And the facilities fund is a great example of that from last year and that's in our Fund 40. So when you look at our ending fund balance, it ended up at just over $99 million in total. This was better than we thought it would end up at the, when the budget was adopted, but slightly less than we projected at the interim reports and our estimated actuals. The decline in the ending fund balance really can be attributed from estimated actuals to the unaudited actuals due to a slight increase in the total amount of expenditures than we had anticipated for the year. And what this had is, had as far as an impact on our reserves, as you can see, we had steadily been building reserves over time, again, noting the high reserve amount in 23-24 of almost 24%. And we finished last year with still a very healthy reserve of 21.15%. And other good news, and I know this is nice to see, especially after the, the short decline after the pandemic, is that enrollment continues to be steady. So you can see, we, beginning in 2022, enrollment leveled off and it remains that way. I will say, and this is very anecdotal, but I've been to a lot of drop-off and pickups at our schools as I'm getting out to see our sites. And I see a lot of very young, non-school age children at those pickups. So I would not be surprised if our enrollment doesn't just maintain stable, but actually grows in, say, two to three years. I've also seen a large variation of bikes at the pickup and a lot of walkers. And from someone who really appreciates sustainability, getting those cars off the road and seeing all the, the activity and the family unity is really, touches my heart. And so that's been really cool to see as well. And helmets. I like seeing a lot of helmets. So after we consider all the revenue and expenditure data for the 24-25 unaudited actuals report and we compare it to the previous year, you can see that we've triggered and evaluate a threshold for unrestricted balance change. And that's that negative $8.1 million in the top row there. This is not necessarily surprising considering the planning and implementation of the facility improvements we had completed this summer. But it does tell us we need to be very thoughtful with expanding with our expenditures going forward so that we can maintain all the great programs we offer while starting again to build back reserves and the facilities dollars to continue making the necessary investments for our students and staff. I have to thank Dr. Smith for bringing this tool to the school district. I've seen many different iterations of how districts try to evaluate their fiscal health and I've never seen something that is so simple but so explanatory that it really makes it easy for all of us to be responsible and aware of when we need to maybe pause or pivot, or at least get the conversation started on certain budget adjustments moving forward. Other important points in the report, I just want to thank the board for the support you've provided, not just for our facilities program, but for our routine restricted maintenance program. It's very rare that you see school districts provide more than the bare minimum they're required to for. they're required to for routine restricted maintenance. And that's typically 3% in a unified school district. You had, invested more than double that last year. So, bravo. I, I was extremely impressed, and I had, it made me wonder, what was said at some time to get that investment going forward? Because our buildings don't speak. There had to be some type of analogy. And knowing Jeff Trader, there's probably a story. And I found it. So, I think the nexus Jeff made between our facilities and our program and the 1960 Ford LTD Squire station wagon was the magic ticket. And I took that picture out of this slide deck. But just know, I'm going to save that and keep it in my back pocket. So, if we need to make these larger investments into facilities in the future, you might see that station wagon come back out. And then, we have, of course, the LCFF supplemental target. And that is something that we have typically exceeded every year. And just as a reminder to the Board, because we are community-funded, we assign general fund dollars to meet that target. Otherwise, if we were not community-funded, we would actually get those funds. And so, as we look at what that target would have been, we're still assigning more of our general fund dollars to support our neediest kids within the supplemental program. And that's, that's another kudos, I think, to the investment decisions this Board has made. So, in summary, let me get this up here. This financial report was prepared using the California School Accounting Manual, Principals, or CSAM. Enrollment remains stable. A significant investment was made into our facilities district-wide. Our educational programs and supports continue to be maintained. And our reserve level dropped a bit from previous year. I think there's a better way to say that. And I thank Trustee Anderson for sending me a note on that. It's not that it dropped. It's just there was a slight decline that we had anticipated and planned for. So, thank you. Once these one-time costs are accounted for from the summer construction, we will, again, be very thoughtful and proactive and get our expenditures to realign with our revenues to allow for more program growth and board decisions on investments. And could build back the reserves to make sure we maintain at the threshold levels above the 17%, so we can continue to come back and be flexible and adapt to our changing needs as a district. So, with that, staff recommends approval, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. I really appreciate the reference as well. Maybe one day, we, someone will have one of those cars here in the parking lot. That'd be great.
Might be valuable by now.
Right. Yeah, I think they are. Questions, comments? Trustee Murphy?
Thanks, Jeff. So, no, this is a kind, not relate, not unrelated, but not completely related. How are College Park's drapes? How are they? Where are they?
They're on order.
Yes. What color are they?
They, uh, sorry, actually, we're waiting for the, the principal with her leadership team to tell us the color.
Yes.
So, I don't, I don't choose colors. So, and we are ready to order.
Excellent choice. Excellent choice, Jeff.
Yes, we are hoping to get it ordered by the end of this week is our goal. And it'll take about four or five weeks to be delivered and installed at the site.
So, conceivably before Chris, you know, holiday performances in December.
In theory, yes. The goal. Yes, it's, it's, it's happening very quickly unless there's something, I don't ever like to prom, I'd rather under-promise, over-deliver. But yes.
So, like Thanksgiving could be over-delivery? Okay. I will take that, Jeff. Thank you so much.
Questions? Oh, Trustee Anderson? Oh, student board member?
Thank you. Really quick, I wanted to take a moment to apologize for any procedural issues or mistakes I've made. This is my first time up here on the dais. I'm just trying to provide my peers with a voice and understand everything on the agenda, ask questions, and be as involved as possible. So, with that, I did have a few questions on the agenda item. So, I do, I did realize that expenditures this year are higher than revenues, and it seems to have been trending in that direction, specifically in relation to programs for students. How can you assure us that programs will continue to be funded or new and adventurous programs that may provide new opportunities to students will be funded and are actually pursued even though the district is currently in a deficit?
Love that question. You might be a future CBO in addition to a future superintendent. The question, when you're looking at these unaudited actuals, it really comes down to one-time revenue, one-time costs versus ongoing revenue and ongoing costs. And so, I'm happy to sit down and explain this in a lot more detail. But quite simply, all of the bulk of the expenditures we had last year and this year were one-time in nature. So, you're talking about architect fees, construction. So, when you look at the new place, play structures and shade structures, the multipurpose room improvement, the security cameras, those aren't going to happen next year. So, those fall off. And when you look at aligning our revenues with supporting our student needs, you want to use ongoing revenue to support that. And the bulk of our cost being people, staff, you need to always pay for people with ongoing revenue changes. So, that's why I say you're going to see, after we get our construction costs this year, coming down and booked here in this year, you're going to see a natural realignment beginning next year between our revenues and expenditures.
Thank you. And then, I had a second question really quick. So, I went through the actual actuals for, like briefly, and I saw under books and supplies for both last year and this year, it was about 20% to 30% less was actually spent than was budgeted for in June. So, I understand, like, the district, I, don't get me wrong, definitely supports students, provides all the resources we need. We're not lacking in any way. I was just wondering if that decrease is a result of lower vendor costs, leftover inventory from previous years, or an overall decline in purchases for materials for students?
Definitely not lower vendor costs. So, with, with books and supplies, it can vary, right? Especially when you think of textbooks, when you have years of textbook adoptions, those are very expensive. So, you're going to have large fluctuations in those expenses. In terms of other, if you're looking at instructional supplies, non-instructional supplies, it really just depends. A lot of times, sites will already have some of those materials on hand, and you get a lot of the ordering done at the beginning of the year. But you hear from them, we need this, we need this, we need this. So, their budget may change throughout the year. But by the time you go to close the books, a lot of those vendor purchase notes or purchase orders, which are essentially, it's, it's how we bill and pay for the, the vendors, there's, they still have money on them. So, when you close the books, it's called, that, that money falls out. And that's why you might see a reduction in the unaudited actuals.
Thank you. And then, I had one last question. So, spending on services, I noticed specifically for this year, was a bit higher than initially budgeted for. And you may have already answered this a little bit with the big one-time expenses. I was just wondering what kind of expenses go into the services category?
A lot more than what I said. So, I said architects, and then you have sub-agreements for services. So, that could be supporting some of our special ed contracts and outsourcing out. It could be legal is a very large one. Essentially, anything that's not a supply but is required to support the operations of the school district. So, even when you think of like our utilities, right? So, yeah.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yep.
I don't know if anyone's question's going to be as educated, educated as that one, but who wants to try? Anyone? Any other questions?
Yes, thank you. I am excited to have board members who ask questions. I think that's a great posture to have. Asking questions is really important. I, I love that. I, since this is the first time you're presenting to us on the budget, I would love to hear any observations. This is our relatively, like, standard kind of template that we use. You come from a different district, and I would love to hear any observations or thoughts or recommendations that you have. We added, you know, the really high amount of reserves based on what former Jeff recommended to us and this chart, which were so informative for us. So, I just would love to, like, learn any ideas that you have or things you've noticed. Thank you.
Yeah, so, I did change the, the presentation a little bit because I can't help myself at some point. But I'm trying to just ease in and not create too much drastic difference between what you'd seen in the past versus what you've seen now. Because I think it helps, if you're used to seeing data in a certain way, to slowly migrate away from that. But what I like to, I get, I'm very visual, especially for our community and our, and our Board. And I think providing more visuals that show comparisons for prior year versus current year dollars, tracking trends, highlighting very key assumptions are always essential. Because when we get into our board budget study sessions and workshops, we're not just looking at, this is how much revenue is available. I want you to know, this, this is why we're assuming that much revenue is available. Because I think it's at the heart of a bigger budget issue. But yeah, over time, I would, I would anticipate you're going to see some changes in how the, the information's presented with the goal of being, I think the more people that understand what they're looking at in the budget, it does us more justice as a district because that increases our checks and balances. And that includes our community members.
Thank you so much. That's very helpful.
Trustee Crane?
Yes, I'd like to talk about TK for a second, since it's unfunded. It's an unfunded mandate. So, are we done with our capital outlay for TK as far as facilities, things like that? And then, if yes, yay. If no, how much more do we have to spend? And then, once the capital outlay is, is taken out of the formula, how much is TK costing us a year without all the, you know, like furniture and?
Yeah. So, it's a good question. I, I can't say that we're totally done with the capital outlay. What I can say, though, is that's one of those great expenditures that you can use Fund 25 for. Because it's a new program and it's growing. As I mentioned, we're seeing a lot of young, non-school-age kids. So, we could see the expansion of TK going forward. As far as the summer's work for our TK programs, yeah, we're closing out that in terms of the new furniture and some of the, the flooring that may have been replaced in cabinetry. But it's not a, I know we're not getting reimbursed for the program itself, but we are able to use Fund 25, which thankfully, we recently raised our developer fees before I got here. And that'll provide additional funding we can do those projects with.
So, how much does it cost us?
I'll, I'll have to look into that and get back to you. I don't have that memorized.
Okay. And then, lastly, what is our reserve target for the year, for the end of year? Because I know we dropped it because of our one-time expenditures and everything, and that was expected. And we, I know we're on board with that. What's your, what's our personal target?
Yeah, so, estimated actuals, so the report prior to this, you're looking at a little over 15% of it dropping for current year. I think based on the fact that our expenditures came in slightly higher than we are anticipating at unaudited actuals, it's still going to be around that 15%, maybe slightly lower, but still there. And then, we'll make the necessary adjustments at first and second interim, because I think things are going to right-size. We had a lot of people retire and a lot of vacancies that were still being filled. Tracy came in like a rock star and refilled them a little quickly. So, maybe not see as much in the savings as we were hoping. But I think there's going to be some natural realignment in the short term. And especially as we get all the final construction bills put together. And then, like I said, next year, you're going to probably see a much faster realignment of our revenues and expenditure.
And our property tax, it's a five-point, what was it? Projected, hmm, let's see.
Current year?
Yes, current year is.
5% growth?
5% growth. So, that's, that's nice. That's pretty robust as far as property tax increase.
Yep. And remember, it compounds too. So, even if it's only 5% this year and 4% next year, that's a very similar in terms of growth. So.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions?
All right. Thank you so much. That was what? That was great. Thank you.
All right, we're moving on to 19, oh, excuse me. Let's approve those. Do I have a, do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Trustee Anderson, seconded by Trustee Pearson. Roll call vote.
Student Board Member Jeremy Lor?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustor Soylu?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee McElroy?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
All right, motion carries 7-0. Moving on to 19C, adopt the Proposition 28 Arts and Music in Schools funding annual report for fiscal year 2024-2025. Mr. Dixon?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. What you have before you is an annual requirement to approve the expenditure report for the prior year for Proposition 28 funds. These are restricted funds that come to us for supporting arts and music education. As you can see, the report on it has some template data that you fill out with the number of certificated FTE, classified FTE, number of students served, and number of sites provided. One thing it doesn't have is the actual expenditure information. So, I just want to give some context on that, is that last year, you approved a report that had spent $815,845 out of Proposition 28. This year, this report includes $2,322,519 of Prop 28 expenditures. And that's about what our annual allocation is. So, we figured that out with the great work from our instructional services team. I think another interesting set of data is that last year, there were 3.6 FTE for certificated and one classified included in the expenditure report. And this year, you can see there's 10.9 certificated. Last, last data point is you also grew from supporting 8,900 students last year to a little over 9,500 this year.
That's great. I just want to say thank you for the way that we're implementing this Prop 28 Arts Education Program money. I've heard nothing but great, great reviews from teachers to students to parents to everything about how we're implementing, you know, the arts, the theater, the music, the dance. Everyone absolutely loves it. And then, the people that you found, the teachers, are just amazing. I don't know how you found them. One, just, her name's Miss Mary, and she is, comes from Disney. And she is a theater teacher. And she is just fabulous. At every school that I've asked if they've had theater, and they say, yes, Miss Mary. We love Miss Mary. And she is great from, you know, kindergarten to sixth graders. Love her.
A lot of gratitude to Dr. Lori Hernandez in our HR department for really looking for the highest quality people relentlessly.
I mean, I don't know how you guys found these people. Like, these are amazing.
We've had the same, I've had the same reports, just glowing reports from parents.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
They want to be here.
Yeah, it, it's great. Any questions? Other comments? All right. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Moved by Trustee Pearson, seconded by Trustee Crane. Roll call vote.
Student Board Member Jeremy Lor?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustor Soylu?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee McElroy?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to 19D, approve certificate credential waiver for a certificated employee 2025. Mrs. Nip?
Absolutely. So, this item is a request for a certificate credential waiver for a career technical education teacher who's currently enrolled in coursework to obtain the authorization to provide services to limited English proficient students. It's required by the State Board of Ed and the Commission on Teacher Credentialing. An approval of this waiver will allow the teacher to continue providing instruction while also completing the required credentialing process.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Moved by Trustee Pearson, seconded by Trustee Crane. Do we have any discussion questions?
Seeing none. Roll call vote.
Student Board Member Jeremy Lor?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustor Soylu?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee McElroy?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries 7-0.
19E, announce intended appointee to the Personnel Commission. Mrs. Nip?
Absolutely. So, this item is regarding the announcement of the Board's intended appointee to the Personnel Commission. The term of the current board-appointed commissioner will expire on December 1st, 2025. As part of the process for the upcoming vacancy, one application was received, and that was from Ms. Metoyer, the current incumbent. So, in compliance with the Education Code, the recommendation before the Board to consider is to announce Ms. Metoyer as the intended appointee to the Personnel Commission. The next step will occur at the October board meeting, where a public hearing will be held, and the Board will consider action to formally appoint the intended appointee to a new three-year term of office.
Great. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Okay.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Murphy, seconded by Trustee, was that Crane?
Crane.
All right. Any questions?
Comment?
Roll call vote.
Student Board Member Jeremy Lor?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trust- Trustor Soylu?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee McElroy?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Right, motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
Okay, 20, Public Hearing Report. 20A is a public hearing in compliance with requirements of Education Code Section 60119 and 60422B. Sufficiency of textbooks or instructional materials that are consistent with the content and cycles of the curriculum framework for the 2025-2026 Williams Settlement Legislation. Assistant Superintendent Shields?
Yes, this is annual and routine, and this is the public hearing that opens for any comments so that we can then consider adopting the resolution.
Okay, I'm going to open the hearing at 8:46. Are there any public comments? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close it at 8:46. Okay. Twenty, that was it. All right, 21, Resolution Adoption Calendar. 21A, adopt Resolution Number 28-09-25 in compliance with the, with requirements of Education Code Sections 60119 and 60422B. Sufficiency of textbooks and instructional materials. Assistant Su, Shields?
And this is to ensure the board annually, we track our orders through Destiny. We ensure that they're delivered. We make visuals, confirmations, and we also survey. So we do bring before you that we are, our textbooks are sufficient in the district.
Great. Good to know. Good to hear. Motion, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And I see I have a comment from Student Board Member Jeremy Lor?
Yes, so I really quickly wanted to ask, I know I already discussed this with you a little bit earlier today, about how sufficiency is necessarily determined. So I was just wondering if sufficiency is a specific percentage threshold or determination mandated by the state, or how all of that works?
It's from the state. It's from a settlement, the Williams lawsuit that I believe is close to 20 years old. But it's that every student has access to their textbooks. And so it's all, it's literally all. And that's the threshold.
Thank you.
Good question. Any other comments? Okay, so this has been moved by trustee Pearson, seconded by trustee Murphy. Is that it? Got that right? Okay. Roll call vote.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustor Soylu?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee McElroy?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
All right, vote carries seven oh. 21B, adopt Resolution 27-09-25, gain limit for the 2024-2025, and estimate, estimated gain limit for 2025-2026. Mr. Dixon?
Yes, thank you. This is an annual requirement we bring to the board that recognizes the appropriations limit for last year related to our gain limit, and then provides an estimate for this year. Calculations very complicated. It's one of the few things you and I could probably say it was happened before we were born.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved by trustee Crane, seconded by trustee Pearson. Any questions, comments? Roll call vote.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustor Soylu?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee McElroy?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Right, motion carries seven zero. Now moving on to 22, Informal Report Superintendent Smith?
Had a chance to serve on a statewide webinar for the California Department of Education on coherence and sustainability. I was able to brag about the work that our school districts doing around expanded learning opportunities and our community school grant use. And people were blown away with the way we're intentionally using our resources and communicating that it really is a continuation from the classroom to the playground. To, and one of my examples, the swimming pools where we're eliminating gaps of access by providing swim safety for students in our community. That got the most thumbs up likes and hearts from the 300 people on the webinar. But I think tonight was another example of that when our group did a great job of talking about our summer activities. Even though extended school year isn't summer school, we get it, Heather, but a great articulation. And that's what the team shared. Kristi pointed that out. It's, it's really getting the groups together and again, being intentional about how we do this work together. It's seamless, and it's working, and the data proves that. I'm just really proud of our team for the work that they do.
All right, now, Board Member Reports. I'll start with trustee Crane and move on down this way.
Okay, well, first of all, welcome to our Student Board Members. You definitely are a highlight, and we love your voice because we do the work because of you and for you. So thank you for being here tonight, being introduced, and also being a voice. So thank you. Let's see, I'm looking forward to the College and Career Fair on October 22nd at the OC Fairgrounds. I know the, the team's been working hard doing that, so can't wait. I've been spreading the word. Went to the Newport Mesa School Foundation, and they are very, very busy getting the state of the schools breakfast. That's being held on October 28th, rolling with our staff. Typically, I'm so proud of our AV team. They're there early because the event starts at 7:00. So thank you in advance for all the work that the staff is doing for that. On, on the site front, been to a few sports events. The launch, sports have been, the launch of fall sports is ongoing and ready and rolling. And one of the funnest games that we've been watching, because we're, trustees were comparing notes, is the flag football team, the women's flag football teams. And it's just kind of fun to see women playing football safely. And apparently, it is one of the largest growing sports in Orange County. So that's great, and it's now a CIF sport. And just, I think, well, should I, trustee Wigan, do I, I went to CROP, and they're just, they signed a contract with Access.
Yes, you can talk about that.
Yeah, I, I went in, I was an alternate to the Coast to Mesa ROP meeting. And Dr. Dozier shared with the, with us that CROP signed a contract with OCDE to service the Access and Juvenile Center kids. And that's wonderful because those are the kids that could use that. And so for them to introduce that, so it was a proud moment for the team. And I know trustee Wigan was a big part of that. So thanks for all that. That's it. Thank you.
Trustee McElroy?
Couple of highlights of my month. One thing that really struck a chord, no pun intended, the Killi Brook celebration of the grant they received from the Philharmonic Society and the delivery of all the string instruments for their orchestra program. It was super exciting. It was, it was to see how thrilled the children were and how excited they were to get these new instruments was, was pretty cool to see. Of course, the Estancia High School Theater opening, gorgeous. I went to Newport, it was first flag deck, super fun, super happy. Watching amazing, our Newport Harbor amazing girls volleyball. I mean, a girl my size is roofing a six foot five girl. It was beautiful. And then the flag football team's great, and our football team cheering them on. They're not so great, but they're cheering them on. Meeting great staff, parents, teachers, students, and at the end, back to school night. But lastly, I wanted to send a huge thank you to the Ben Carlson Foundation, which most of you, I'm sure, know what that is. But this weekend was the Ben Carlson Charity Paddle from Catalina to Newport Beach. My husband participated. He was the second oldest, and he finished first. He raised, they raised, they raised $450,000 approximately, still raising money. But I want to talk about the Ben Carlson Foundation and why I just love it. It's given out 500,000 in college scholarships to our, to our kids in high school. Last year, the recipient was from Newport Harbor. He went on to Harvard, and he's on the rowing team. It provides resources to underprivileged lifeguard agencies. Last year, they partnered with Costa Mesa Schools, Whittier and College Park, and helped train over 100 kids to swim and provided of those kids three junior guard, lifeguard program scholarships. This fall, they have programs planned in Costa Mesa Schools of Ray, 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 Victoria, Killi Brook, and Wilson. I talked to them yesterday about that. So I just wanted to say a big thank you to the Ben Carlson Foundation and all they do for the schools. That's it.
Trustee Anderson?
Thanks. I was able to have a visit at Whittier Elementary, and I continue to be extremely impressed with Dr. Montano and all of the investment in community partnerships that they have been doing for quite some time now. They are through the month of October to celebrate Hispanic heritage, having cultural dress for Thursdays, which I think is awesome, and he is really looking forward to it. And then a couple of big events and festivities. I was really thankful to go to the Estancia Theater opening with all of us. It was really cool to meet with our former school board member, Brittany, who was an Estancia graduate, who's now at UCI doing pre-med. And one of the things that she brought up was how proud of the advocacy and moving the location. And so that was just a key indicator, I think, of the importance of having student board members and also listening to community voice. She's shared how several of her schoolmates, it was the first time they'd ever come to a board meeting to ask for the location change. I also, when I was meeting with her, it was because she is on a break before she applies for her MCATs and to start medical school. And I, an idea that she had, and she wanted to put forward again, was to create a Westside Latino Leadership Institute, kind of a mentoring program for students to have exposure, particularly for elementary, for people who are in jobs that they might not have been introduced to. She said she didn't know anyone who was a doctor, who was in that role as a parent or in her community. And so that was one idea that she had. And I shared with her that I talked with the OCC president, and she had a similar experience and wanted to contribute to that as well. And our recent Student Board Member, Devani from Estancia, is also wanting to be a part of that and continue through doing advocacy work. She's starting an advocacy club at Estancia based on her work of joining the Student Board Member work. And so I just, I'm really excited for some of the community pieces that are happening. Additionally, some of our Student Board Members, but also just members of our community. And Roslyn explained, she talked a bit about Chamoy. Chamoy has been able to advocate now at several of the city council meetings. And most recently, were instrumental in getting rental protections and setting up a legal defense fund in the city of Costa Mesa. And so I think a lot of the work the DIW president has said was because of some of the advocacy and support that we've been able to build in the past five years. We now have a lot of students and a lot of parents who are advocating, not just around schools, but throughout the city. I think one thing I want to point out from earlier is we had two students who were here, who, former students, alumni, who are doing quite well in their lives. One works for the city of Costa Mesa, and another is doing youth advocacy work. And I think one of the concerns that I have with what the conversation was earlier is there tends to be this negative lens for certain schools, for certain neighborhoods, rather than in a desire to learn from people who live there and who have experienced that community. To me, it's frankly bizarre to not necessarily know how to pronounce a school's name, but thinking you know what's best for that school. When we have community members who have been raised in that neighborhood and are saying, we don't want something, that's why we're up here. So I have no other vote that I can do when I'm representing my community who doesn't support something, except to vote no. It's disappointing to me and really quite odd that when we're hearing directly from a police chief of a city that says there's not a problem, that we are insisting on a problem. We're not seeing students, as our students, a fourth grader who is a student, rather than a future gang member, is really, really dysfunctional and is not our role. I, I'm just, I'm, I'm really disappointed actually in the conversation earlier. I think it's disappointing, and it's a real overreach to not represent the fact that we want to, we're not an at-large district. We represent a specific zone for a reason, to give voice. This past weekend, we were, we were approved and accepted to be part of the California School, Latino School Board Association Conference. Trustee Ursulou and I spoke at that conference on parent voice, on increasing community engagement. People that were in those rooms were asking us what we were doing and why we had been successful. When I vote no on something that parents are telling me they don't want, it's disappointing when people that don't represent those schools think they know what is best for that community, think they know what is best for that school. Not based on data, based on an assumption, a lot of assumptions, not facts, not data, not relationships. If there's a concern about a school that maybe eight kids need a mentor, the approach is not to go to the highest level of oversight. It's to ask, who is a neighborhood community partner? Who is a church partner that could help with this space? We do not need someone to give out gift cards and turkeys. That is not helping someone not be in a gang. It's, I think a lot of us know that's not an appropriate approach to actually build resources and close the opportunity gaps and doing a lot of the work that we are doing. So I just, I, I continue to be concerned when people choose things rather than seeking to listen and to learn. The first thing that I did as a trustee was to put on the agenda for a school community facilitator at each of the Title I schools. It was for schools in my zone for a need that was incredibly real and was asked by parents and by staff. I used to hold a lunch for our facilitators once a month, so I knew them quite well. It's disappointing and frankly bizarre to me when a new trustee comes in and decides that they know what is best for someone else's schools. It's, it's not what we're here for. It's, we're not here to play partisan politics. That's why I'm an independent. I don't think it's appropriate for our schools. It's not appropriate for us as trustees to overreach on matters that we don't really understand. Thank you.
Trustee Pearson?
I was able to go to a lot of back to school nights. It was so great to see how hard our teachers worked to make our kids and our parents feel like a community. Refreshing, wonderful, all good vibes. I was also able to go to attend the Anderson Dean's Dinner. It was a full house. It was a stunning venue. And the parents who were there clearly care deeply about their school. Thanks to their generosity and their donations, Anderson was able to furnish the entire school for this year, which was fantastic. So we thank them. It's an incredible gift to our students and to our staff.
Thank you. Trustee Murphy?
Oh, well, it's late. I will just say, here is a breakdown of Mesa's, of the Mustangs football schedule so far this year. We have, we beat Magnolia 56, we beat Century 49-0, sorry, 56-0. Century 49-0, Savannah 57-0. So we are on a roll. With, of course, the only loss being to Estancia. Which was a little brutal. I will say, there were some of us who were very unhappy. out there in the crowd. But other than that, things are looking fantastic for the rest of the season, and I'm so excited for the Mustangs. And so if you have a free moment on a Friday night, as I've always said, Costa Mesa on that corner, pick your sport, pick your neighbor, pick your, like, little side, you know? Like, there's Dippin' Dots, and there's Pizza, and there's, you can, you could have your, you could spend your entire evening out there enjoying every sport.
Trustee Ursulou?
Can we close the meeting?
Um, yes.
Do you have a comment?
I have no comment. I'm just asking that we close the meeting in honor of our two students that were killed.
Yes, I just wanted to thank you all for a great start to the, to the year. I'm going to leave you with one quote, and then we'll close the meeting in honor of our two students that have passed away. I had a parent come up to me and go, you know what? It seems like the schools just really know what they're doing this year. And I thought, that is probably the best, you know, on week three, one of the, the best comments I could hear about anything. And so I think we really, you, you really know what you're doing this year, I guess, everyone. So thank you, keep it up. We're, we're, had a great start to the, to the beginning of the school year. So I appreciate all your really hard work. And now I'd like to close the meeting in honor of our two students, Allison Castillo La Gaspe and Saith Toledo Mendez, who tragically passed away this year, and we, we desperately miss them. Thank you. Closing the meeting at 9:07.